Okay, everybody. Thank you for being quiet today. I guess we'll get started a little earlier. Oh, like right on the dot. That's early for us. Okay, so welcome to the city of Dania Beach. Dania Beach City Commission, regular meeting. It's Tuesday, February 28th, 2023, 7:00 PM. Could we please have a roll call?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lou Ellen.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Salvino.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
City Attorney Bootses.
Here.
Can we all please bow our heads for a moment of silence? Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll jump right into it with item 3.1 regarding CW Thomas Park conceptual design. The PowerPoint is presented by Berme- Bermeo Ajemil and Partners.
Grazie.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney, Team Staff. Eric Brown, Parks and Recreation for the city of Dania Beach. And we are here today to have a well thought out plan presented to you guys tonight. A well awesome plan. We hope you guys are excited as excited as I am when I saw it and as excited as the manager was when she saw it. So without further ado, I want to introduce Randy Holloman from BNA, who would actually go through the presentation with you guys.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, everyone. We're very excited to be here tonight to present to you the plan that we've been working on for CW Thomas Park. It's really an exciting project. I think hopefully the first of many parks the city is able to redevelop. This is a great opportunity for the Parks Department to sort of set a new standard in the city for your public parks. The first, I'm going to cover the master plan, which is the overall site plan. And then I'm going to go into some of the details of the building itself. And you can see here is the overall master plan. We have, north is straight up. We have at the top of that plan is the new building and the swimming facility that I'll go into more detail. Below that, on the left side, is the multipurpose, also a football field. And then to the right of that is some open green grass area where we have a lot of trees. We're going to protect the trees that are there. Above that, we have the, a new basketball court and then also a new playground facility above that. And that generally, there's a lot of detail in there that you can't see at this scale, but you will see more on the building in the next images. This is the new community center that will replace the existing community center on the northeast corner of the site. And we moved it to the other side on the northwest and the swimming pool that's directly east of the new community center. We have the football field, as I said, at the southern portion of the site. And this will be a multipurpose field that can be used for football. It has bleachers for regular events and it'll really be a nice facility when completed. The basketball courts is being relocated on the site to this location, which we think is better orientation on the site and very convenient for the parking along the east side of the site. And again, here is the playgrounds, which will have, we just lost something. Oh, there it is. The playground is directly north of the basketball courts. And we also have the two open play areas on the northeast corner and the southeast corner that if the city ever wants to do more facilities in the future, these are perfect spaces for that. But this time, the plan is fully developed for the program that we have. This shows you the building, the new community center. This is the plan for the community center. North is still straight up. And I'll zoom in here on the program. It comes, oh, I'm having a hard time reading that. I think it's 15,000 square feet total. I'm sorry. Thirteen seven, you have a better sight than I do. 13,700 square feet. And this gives you all of the breakdown of all the rooms in the building. And I'm going to go through that right now. When you come in from the building on the north side, on Northwest Second Street, you'll come into a lobby on the sort of the east side of the building. At that point, you can make a decision to then leave the building, go to the pool area or the outdoor cafe area, which is adjacent to a concession stand area. Also, there will be bathroom entrances at that point that you can enter from the pool area. So you don't have to go into the building to use the restrooms. They'll be accessible from the pool. The other direction, you go straight ahead, that will take you out again outside to the park. The playground, there's an outdoor cafe that'll be available there for the people using the park. They can use the concession stand at that point. And also, there'll be restrooms available to park users during the day from the outside so that the whole community center does not have to stay open for park users to get to enjoy the restrooms. So they'll be available for users of the park all day long. If you turn right as you come in the lobby, past the reception area, you'll come, there'll be recreation offices. There's a youth after school program room and also some classrooms that have a divider in the center that can break it into two classrooms or a single classroom. Directly on the opposite side of the hallway from that will be the new gym, which is going to facilitate a basketball court and some workout equipment. So it's going to be a really fantastic facility for the city. And you're going to see some of the renderings that we've done that I think really, it sets a new standard for your community centers, I think, and the future of the development of the public park system. This is a view from Northwest Second Street, looking sort of up in the air, down on the building. You can see the swimming pool on the left side there, the main entry coming into the building. This is a view lower down, looking down across from Northwest Second Street towards the front entry. There'll be other landscaping. This was done primarily to render the building and show you what the building would look like. It's very colorful. I think it's kind of exciting because it's not just a plain building. But we really took a lot of effort to make it interesting and yet not spend a lot of money on materials that wasn't needed. It just has color, visibility into the rooms, and a very attractive building. This is the view from the swimming pool back towards the building. That's the doorway there on the right into the building. And then on the left, you can see the outdoor concession stand, which will serve people at the swimming pool for getting sodas or whatever the concession operations has. This is a view from the park, looking at the back of the building. We have an outdoor courtyard, so people in the park can come up to the concession stand, have a drink or a hot dog, whatever they are actually offering at the concession in the park itself. So they're not in the pool area. So we have two ways to provide service to the people in the park. This is a view straight on the building from the north side, looking at the front of the building. The odd shaped structure was our architects playing with a sculpture idea. So it'd be nice to put some public art in this. So we would certainly encourage the opportunity to incorporate public art in the design. This is a view from the northwest corner of the site, showing some of the signage on the building saying CW Thomas. And this is a view from the southwest corner. The parking along the street is there. We're going to utilize as much of the parking around the site as possible to facilitate the users of the park being able to park immediately adjacent to the building and the sports fields, basketball courts, and the playgrounds. These are some of the colors that were selected. We still have opportunity if the city wants us to modify those. We're still in the early stages of design, so the colors can be modified. But these were some of the design concepts that the architects in our office had for the actual building itself. And these are some straight on elevations of the building. The top one is the north elevation and the lower one is a view from the park, looking north towards the south side of the building. These are some side views of the building from the pool and from the west side. We also, when we've completed this, we did a cost estimate on it because of the massive change in costing of projects now since COVID and chain shortage of supplies and equipment. We decided to do a cost estimate on the project. We did some tweaking of the plan to make sure it met the city's budget. And the cost estimate that we've done on this, on this plan that you see tonight, has come in around 19.121 million. So it's right on the budget the city has. And we worked really hard to make sure that, and this has a fairly hefty contingency for the fact that we're very early in the design process. So it could even go down because there's a 20% factor for unknowns in a project like this, this early in the design phase. So we feel very comfortable. This is a project the city is going to be able to build for the community. And with that, that's the final overall plan. If you have any questions, I'd be really happy to answer them for you.
Thank you for your presentation. Commissioner James?
Hi, Randy.
Hello.
It's been a while.
Yes.
Few things. What happened to the second story?
That was, the economics of it just weren't possible for the budget we had. It just...
So we're cutting out like these things like we had?
There was a track on the second floor.
It was. It was an indoor track. We met with the community and these are things that were presented to the community and now...
The problem we had, in absolute honesty, the price of construction of buildings has absolutely skyrocketed to 40 and 50% higher than when we did the cost estimate two and a half, three years ago. So we, we had to look at the park components and we had to look at the building. Unfortunately, the biggest escalation was the building because that's the hard construction that has gone up the most. So we simply to afford it, we had to take that out.
I thought we were discussing phasing things in so we didn't have to cut things out of the plan because I'm not happy with that at all. If we are going to, I feel like if we're going to do something and spend money on doing it, that it should be done in a way to where we're not, you know, diminishing the whole plan and what we went through with our community. That was a huge part of it. It was a huge part because we had our seniors to be able to walk upstairs on the indoor track and other spaces and buildings up, I mean, and rooms, I'm sorry, up there. And my other question was, was that 19 million for the entire plan?
Yeah, it's for the landscape and the building, yes.
If I may, I want to add, Commissioner James, through the mayor. So we've been working on this for a couple of months to have produced everything that conceptually we wanted, including that second floor with the track on the second floor. We were going to beat $12 million over budget. So we went back to the drawing board because the significance of this project in, at CW in excess of 19 million is, is nothing like what we ever in the history of the city has brought forward. So we're, we're very proud of that. The, the track concept is something that we want to continue to explore as we're working with an interlocal agreement at Olson Middle School. So we haven't like put the track, you know, in the back burner, not to be able to have it.
Indoor. This was supposed to be the second floor of it. And then we were also told that because it was over budget that we were going to talk about different options of phasing them in so we could still have everything that we had. It just seems deceptive.
You and your colleagues want to send us back to the, to the drawing board? But we've been working so hard to be able to bring you 90% of all the things that everybody wanted. I don't know, Randy, if this could be designed in, in a way where the second floor is a future option?
We, we looked at several alternatives because we knew how important the second floor was. And even from an architectural point of view, we really liked it. And there was options of even just building the shell on the second floor and you would finish it off later. That would be less expensive than providing all of that now. And then when the city had the money, they could put the track in. Like you would build the actual structure, you just wouldn't finish off the inside. That's a bit of a saving, but because the costs have gone up so much, it wasn't enough to get us to the 19 million. So we would have had to lose something like a swimming pool. Even the swimming pool had not skyrocketed like the building. The building costs have gone up so much, we, we, there was nothing in the park that we couldn't, we couldn't phase out unless, unless you all want to phase out parts of the park to get the full building. That's entirely your decision. And we, we've got a plan.
That's what I thought we were doing.
Well, that's, that's doable.
What if we kept the swimming pool that's currently there?
I'm sorry?
What if we kept the swimming pool that's there?
It's in pretty bad shape and it's, it's all connected, that existing community center. It's really bad.
Redo it would almost be less expensive than just building a new pool.
I'm sorry?
I don't know. Just to redo, to redo a pool, probably less expensive than to totally fill it in and then pick a new spot for a pool.
The problem is the pool is very old. A lot of code changes have occurred and things like that. I believe it's also quite high out of the ground. Is it not quite high up?
It is.
It would be a real challenge to meet ADA requirements. I would not recommend redoing that pool. You have a long-term maintenance problem if you do. I'd advise not even having a pool than doing that because it's just, and it's connected right to the community center. If we tear that building down, the pool is going to seem very disconnected because it's so high up out of the ground. So.
I, that was, that's one of my, that's almost like a, for me, like a deal breaker. Like this was a very, this is a very, very important project, very near and dear to me. So this is a huge surprise that we're seeing the changes to the building. I would rather phase in different parts of it than to lose that component of that facility. When we're talking about the field, does that include it being a turf field? Does it include bleachers with coverings over it? And because I didn't see any specifics when it came down to that. And did, does it include the concession stand with the skybox?
The concession is in the community center. That's where the concession is going to be up by the swimming pool so that we can service the pool and the parks. There's no concession down in the, the football, sports field area, okay? I believe, and I have to check the details of that plan that was up there. Do we keep this, I think we have a skybox, a press box, yes, on the one side of the field. And there are some bleachers. The field, though, is natural turf. It is not synthetic.
So what happened to that portion of it too? Is it the money? Like can we, can we, okay, so the last time this was brought up, I really asked for us not to come back with something that is cheaper in quality because we didn't have the money. And then I was, I was under the understanding to where you guys are going to bring us parts that we can phase in, so we didn't lose that quality. And now this is an entire plan that's just chopped up just so we can say we can afford it.
Well, no, let me, through the mayor again, this is of very good quality. Everything here that we're bringing forward is brand new. Nothing old stays in the park, okay? This is everything brand new. So everything is of the highest quality. We're not, what we're presenting is, doesn't have a second floor with a running track on the second floor because that was taking us $12 million over budget. But your pool is a beautiful pool. Your field is a beautiful field. Now, that doesn't mean that three, four, five years from now that we decide to put the turf. We can come back and, and put the turf. But this is, let me put it on the record, this is of eight classes. This is a 19 million plus, plus project for this community.
Can we not phase it in?
Phase in the second floor?
No, not phase it in the second floor. Can we not phase?
Athletic facilities.
Well, no, can we not phase in like what we discussed the last time? When we were saying we were going to phase in certain parts of the plan, so we didn't lose any of the plan? That's what was discussed.
The, the, the artificial turf could be phased in. In, in the future, we could take off the grass. But when, when we're looking at a budget that you all gave us and we're looking at all the parks in the city, right? Including taking over parks, parcels of land from the CRA so we could take care of all the parks in, in our city. We're also going to be working now with Mildred Jones Park, right? Which is another at 2 million. So right off the bat, we're going to invest $21 million between Mildred Jones Park and CW Thomas Park.
I'm asking, can we phase in parts of the park? Not do everything altogether and kind of phase in little pieces, but can we phase in portions of the park? That's what I was, that's what I understood.
So for example, the pool, we tried, we tried to look at the pool. Do we renovate the pool versus putting in a new pool? Do we renovate the pool versus putting in a, a new pool? I mean, if you could take off the pool, you could, you know, leave the football field as grass and maybe if, you know, we could go back to the drawing board and put that second story. But to lose the, the second story and, and the track is one thing versus piecemealing this and really taking things out of this plan. But we'll follow the lead of you and your colleagues in regards to what we wanted, what you all want us to do. We wanted to give you the most that we can give you within the budget that, that we approved.
I, I understand that, but this is also a very huge community-based led effort. We had many, many meetings and input from the community and it just feels like we are making decisions on something that hasn't even been, you know, presented to the community now. That is a change from what they've seen and what they've understood that was going to happen. So I'll let everyone else speak now and then I'll come back, but those are my thoughts on it.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Davis?
Well, you just, you just made my last point. I, I do understand that construction costs have skyrocketed immensely and that this is, you know, it's still a very beautiful project overall. My thing is, it may be a deal breaker for Commissioner James, but is it a deal breaker for the community? I, I would like to see if the community would want to shut this whole thing down just because of a second floor or if they would be accepting and understanding what they want to see an entire park done just because it would beautify the entire community? Or does this not go with what the overall concept is? And if, if they feel like how you feel, then, you know, then we can talk about doing it a different way. But I, I, I think overall it was a compromise. I think that overall it looks beautiful. You obviously put a lot of thought, effort landscaping to make it a gorgeous upgrade for, for the residents. But I, I just don't like for residents to be told one thing and then, and then, you know, see something else. And if this is the first time we're unveiling that, then I just think that it deserves another conversation with the community. That's all. And I, and I think that if they were to buy in to this, then I would be willing to support it.
Well, first of all, we have not went out to community for it because the plans hadn't been approved by you guys yet. So once it's approved by you guys, then we take it to the community. So if we go to the community first and then we come back to you guys, I think that's a little backwards. So we haven't even done that portion yet. But I do want to speak on what Commissioner James said and I'm just as disappointed as she is because when we came up with the plan that we had in the beginning, and I jokingly said something here at the last meeting that I won't repeat, but when we came back, we came back at thirty million dollars. I called Frank right away and Frank, you know, almost had a baby just like I had one. So, and we came back at thirty million dollars. So my next step was to call the manager and say, listen, we need to have a team meeting and come up with something. And I do believe we came up with something. I even asked them, can we put a shell on top so in future references, we can come back and build a second floor? Because I think the second floor is important, but at the end of the day, I don't feel good piecemealing it because it's still going to make the, the community look like we just have done something. And so at the end of the day, we get a nice looking gym, but we got a raggedly football field or we got a, you know, a messed up pool or we don't have a pool or we don't have anything. So we tried to come back to you guys with everything and the scope and we still went over budget and, and because we got eighteen point one, we had nineteen point one. So at the end of the day, we still wanted to come back with something I feel like this community will definitely enjoy. So I mean, I, I'm disappointed in the fact that we couldn't get what, you know, what was planned, but at the end of the day, I want to make sure we're going to get something that's going to be definitely great for years to come and this community can definitely still enjoy it. Because at the end of the day, if we go back and we do it in phases, we still going to have to come up with thirty million dollars. So that's your decision to make.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Thank you. First I want to say, this design is a huge improvement over what we have currently. Absolutely is. I am also disappointed that there would not be an indoor track and I do understand the reasoning for the costs. My, and I, are there other things that we're cutting as well though? I mean...
The, the only, the hope was to have a synthetic field and we're not able to do that. But when the cost came in, we had the conversation as a team, city manager and Eric, it was made very, very clear to us that this was not to sacrifice quality. This was not going to be a cheap park because nineteen million dollars is not cheap. Unfortunately, nineteen million dollars doesn't go the same distance it did before COVID. That's the problem we had. And the decision, we talked a lot about phasing. Should we take the pool out? Could we do this instead of the pool? The synthetic field alone is one million dollars. It was just an item that we could, and we knew that is a very easy change later on. So the, the synthetic field, but basically there's very little deductions otherwise. The big one was the second floor in the, on the building and, and we all were very disappointed, including the city manager, and made it very clear to us how disappointed she was. But we moved forward to create the best project we could. Now, can it be phased? Yes, and we have pricing for everything. We know what the second, I, don't ask me right now, but we know what the second floor costs because we know what the building costs now, we know what our original, so we know what that second floor is costing. I don't recall, it's significant though. It is quite shockingly significant. It's not a hundred thousand. If we take out the pool...
It's millions.
Oh, if we take out the pool, the basketball courts and the playgrounds, I still don't think we have enough for the second floor.
Right, so it makes up the difference to the thirty million. So it's going to be that other ten million or so.
It, it's, it's significant amount of money for that second floor.
Right.
Because you have to have a stair, you have to have an elevator. And we had an external stair for fire emergency. That all was a significant cost, we knew in a second story, but that was what, because the square footage, also we were able to reduce the size of the building because we were able to get rid of the stairs, the elevator, you know, things like that. So...
Can I assume also that with the other parks that are also going to be done, Frost Park, PJ Mealy Park, that there's going to have to end up being cuts there as well?
Well, and I, it's funny because before the meeting, I said to Eric, you know, we're going to have to run the cost estimates again. Those were all done pre-COVID and we're going to have the same issue. And this is happening everywhere in the area. I mean, every one of our clients, we're doing maybe ten or fifteen parks. Every one of them is fifty to sixty percent more than pre-COVID. And it's staggering and it's unpleasant, but it's a, we can't do anything about it. So the direction we were given was make this a good park though. We are not going to go to the community with a cut down, you know, hacked park. So I, I think it's a fantastic park, but we are missing one of your primary goals and I understand that. And if you want us to take out all those elements to afford the second floor, it can be done, though you could phase all those other components. But I, I'm, I don't know what you'd, I have to look at the list of items that will afford that. Now, the other option is, and we looked at it for the city manager, was to just build a shell. You could come and build the track and do the finishes, the lighting and all that and interior finishes later because the first floor could then operate as a first floor. So you'd have an operable, operable first floor of the, of the rec center. The second floor track and finishes would be done later.
But you still have to put in the footprint, we have to have stairs, the elevator.
You wouldn't have to put the elevator necessarily in, but you have to put the shaft, you have to put the stairs, because you wouldn't want to come and build stairs later. You would probably ideally want someone to put the elevator in. So those big ticket items are still up front. And you built the shell, you know, you're, you're saving some money on not building the track and the finishes. It's just a really high ticket price item with the escalation in construction.
It's unfortunate, but it's, yeah.
It's terrible.
But I do, I do want to say, I do think you did an excellent job with trying to cut the costs down and try to make it somewhat closer to budget.
We, we tried to make it invisible and that it wasn't an issue. And I don't think the average person who enjoy, will enjoy this, will notice it unless they were looking forward to a second floor track, which you're not going to see.
Which there will be a group of people who are. There certainly will be a group of people who are. No doubt about it.
Excuse me, so Kathy did pull up the first plan that we came up with and just the building along upstairs is twenty million dollars.
Wow.
The whole, the whole building, the entire building.
The whole building, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And that's a huge escalation because vertical construction is what went up the most after COVID. You know, landscaping is pretty small.
Because it's just too expensive to build right now.
So you virtually, from what Eric just said, I forgot it was at twenty. Basically, the budget was the building. So you could build the building and nothing else. As if you're going to phase it.
Thank you.
Commissioner James?
Yes, thank you. I mean, if the building initially was twenty million, we already knew what numbers we were facing and we've already had, like I said, several conversations. I don't, I also don't see the parking lot that was on the other plan. Was that cut too?
Well, we, we have enough parking around the site that we don't need it. We don't, it wasn't needed.
I don't think you go there on the weekends when we have people parked all the way up and down.
We are adding additional parking on the north side because of the way that's configured now, we're able to add some parking. And that parking lot wasn't a budget and that we need to spend the money on when we met the code. And that was, something actually delayed the project a little bit was calculating the parking requirements for the building, the sports field, and the basketball and the playground. And we, we were able to determine with the city, working with the city staff, that that parking lot wasn't necessary, that we had enough around the site on street parking.
So what all did you cut?
Pardon me?
What all did you cut?
The parking lot was one item off the master plan.
I see the, um, the playgrounds for two and five and then five through twelve, they kind of look a little different or is that the same?
That's where they were and that's what they are.
Okay, okay. So those, those bleachers, are they covered bleachers or they just in the sun? Because this is brutal.
I'd have to look at, I'm sorry, I don't remember the, if the bleachers were ended up covered or they're open. I think they're open. I, I don't, they're open? Oh, they're covered.
The bleachers are covered. The bleachers were covered.
Yeah. Okay, can we have a, a conversation with the community? I just, I, I do, I do feel like this is completely, completely different. I'm not saying that it's a bad project. I'm saying that it's not the project that was presented to the community. It's not the project that I thought was going to be presented tonight and it's not the way that I thought this project was going to be presented tonight. So I had something in mind thinking that I was coming to the meeting to decide how we were going to phase in different elements of the park because that's what we were told. And then now it's like, you know, have, have this or nothing at all. And I don't, I don't like that as well. I mean, the city is in good financial position and that's what I can say. We brag about it all the time. I do not want to penny pinch on projects that we have gone through and had an entire master plan and then come back. I mean, we don't know what the market's going to dictate in a few years. We can say after we completed this, in the other parks, get different things because the market has gone back down. So it's not that all of the parks are going to have to get cut or, or whatever it is. I just, I don't know, I'm just disappointed, I'm done.
Thank you Commissioner James.
You know what, what concerns me, and again, like, like Eric said, we'll follow your lead. But there's also an urgency, because I know we've had this discussion Commissioner James, to begin to do the work because we don't see the cost of rebar, cement, construction materials go, going down. So weighing in, do we move forward and have a, a plan to do something really, really spectacular with the synthetic, which is something that, that we could do at a later time? And I really think, and I was, I went by behind the patch today, there's even an opportunity if we ever wanted to have additional parking for special events that, that we could do off-site but in the close proximity. But like, like Eric said, and even looking at Chesterburg, which is another one that, that is part of this whole budget piece. It's really a remarkable project and we have spent so much time, we even pulled Kathy from maternity leave, well, she pulled herself from maternity leave, you know, practically breastfeeding in a meeting, you know, because we were, we want to always give you guys everything that you want. And coming to you with cutting something is not who we are. But when we look at the scheme of all the parks and everything that we want to do citywide, I mean, a nineteen point two million dollar project here is really, really remarkable. We can always come back with, with the, with the turf and, and invest a million or a million in, in change to put the turf out there. We did talk about the covers for the bleachers and the bleachers do have the covers. I mean, the concession stands, the pool, everything, it's, forget about what's there now because if what's there now had to be between an A and an F, it's a D. And we're giving this, if you don't want to give it an A plus, at the very least, it's certainly an A. And, and it's something that, it's, I wish that COVID didn't happen and the challenges that we faced didn't occur. But boy, have we been at that drawing board trying to bring you something significant. And, and I think that if, if we tell the community that we're bringing them something subpar, then they're going to believe that we're going to be bringing them subpar. It's all how, how we put it out there to the people. And that, that's all I have to say because I really know the efforts of, of Eric Brown and Director Warren and, and working with B and A. And boy, we sent them back to the drawing board and I wasn't nice. Respectfully, you know, but I was firm because I was disappointed. Remember I come from Parks and Rec and you know that. So that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you manager. Commissioner Davis?
Um, yes, I just do, I did speak, I was with some of the members of the community over the weekend and they are anxious to get the building started because they are growing, the senior program is growing. So I, I just still would, you know, they, would they want to wait for that to happen so that we're, you know, stagnating beginning? Or would they want to make sure that we got started on something that would be feasible for everyone? So that, that's where I lie. I lie and I just don't want to, I don't want to delay it because I know that they want to get started. They, when we do these groundbreakings, and that's just a different point, you know, we, we do these groundbreakings, we, we create a lot of excitement, we, we invite our state reps and, and then months and months and months pass and we don't have any action that that happens. And so that, that creates a false sense of action. And so what, what I, I want to be able to do is to be able to get started, to get the people what they need, but not to present them something with, you know, something completely different without letting them know that that's what has taken place. So I would like to inform them of what this new plan is and, and that's where I stand with it. I think they still might want to go forward. I would still want to go forward, but if, you know, whatever, but I think we need to have a conversation and, and, and be transparent with what's going on right now.
Thank you Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Salvino, you have any comments on this?
No.
All right, that's what I like to hear. I have some comments here. Look, I don't want to delay progress, but I would like to see more opportunity for activity. You know, I would like to sacrifice some luxury for activity. Right now, we just have a football field, an outdoor basketball court, an indoor basketball court and a pool. You know, right now, what they have there, they have four basketball courts, a football field, a baseball field and a little indoor community center. So, you know, I, I just want to see the community get more involved. You know, not many seniors are going to play football and basketball, but if you give them a track, I, I would see more activity, more involvement. If, if you could convert the indoor basketball court into a volleyball court.
Yeah, and that will happen.
Okay, that's a possibility, yes.
And, and we don't really lose any of the basketball courts. We gained six on the inside and we still have one for when the park explodes.
We're going to have six basketball courts on the inside.
Well, it's four, you know, you have four inside.
Okay, yeah, you go across, yeah, 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 yeah.
So you gain, so you actually gained, so...
Remember, these are multi-purpose. Don't go look at the indoor gymnasium as just basketball for adults. Look at all the things that need to be played in there.
Yeah.
For seniors, look at the pool, look at water aerobics and things like that. So every single piece there between indoor and out there could be played by, by folks of all ages, different types of passive and active sports.
Okay. And I know I talked to you about this, Mr. Brown, like see a boxing ring in, inside?
Yeah, you did.
You know, I don't think that's too expensive and it's a whole nother activity and it could be right next to the gym as well.
And we can do something like that.
So, yeah, my biggest thing is just to have the community use the park, you have to have more activities that's more diversified for everyone in the community. Exactly, that's, that's a big aim for me and, yeah, thank you for listening to my comments. Commissioner Salvino? You clicked your button?
I apologize.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
So, so what is our next step? Because.
I definitely say we have to go back to the drawing board.
Now, now, every time we go back to the drawing board, just, we want to, I want to let you guys in on something, it costs the city of Daniel Beach. Um, when these architects have to go back and redo all these drawings, we're paying for that. Um, so I just want to keep that in mind, but we'll go back to the drawing board, but what are we going back to drawing board to do? Because if we're going to put the twenty million dollar bill in there, then that, we can do that, but I just need some direction.
Why don't we, why don't we talk first about the budget? So, um, the budget now is, what is nineteen?
Nineteen point one.
Nineteen point one.
Wait, before you get into that, why, why can't we go to the community with this plan and see what the community says about it? I don't think that would be a bad thing at this point.
I guess you guys have to give us, give us that guidance.
I mean, why, why can't we do that? I, if, if we can get consensus to do that, then, then we don't need to go and spend more money on something right now and at least see.
We, and we, we have a great way of doing a community workshop. We have a great way of doing a survey in the workshop, getting live act, response from everybody in the room on their telephones. We can ask them item by item, do you like this, do you want to see more of this, do you want to see less of that? But we could do a full community workshop and have immediate responses that everybody in that room and online can type in and give us. It isn't just a matter of, you know, oh, I want this, I want that. We can ask particular questions about the plan and get very pointed, um, answers.
I'd rather, I'd much rather do that because it's the people in the community that are going to be using it that are.
And I agree, and I agree, and I think, and that, that'll be our next step, that, that is exactly what we're going to do. But what happens when the community come back and say they want the thirty million dollar bill and I just need the funds to get it done? That's all, you know.
But I think if we can explain that and, and see if, and just see if they are willing to compromise.
Right.
I, and they, at least we, we have an opportunity to explain it.
And, and, and that's, and we'll, and that'll be our next step, we'll take it to the community, we'll, we'll get their buy-in on which way or, or another. So if it comes back, we'll come back to you guys and say the community wants the thirty million dollar bill and, and, um, you know, you guys are the government, so. I'm gonna leave it up to you, so our next step, we'll go, we'll take it back to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Salvino?
Okay, I'll speak now. You know, we, but the reason I sat back quietly and listened to everybody talking about this situation. You know, this project's been going on for over a year now and the same things that we've talked about between, you know, building houses and so on, everything, the cost has escalated. Everybody's, you know, I don't understand where we're going to get another ten, fifteen million dollars to build something. I think we're, you know, we're spinning our wheels again, I understand the community involvement is very important to this. But right now, you're going to come back, the community is going to come in here, they're going to want the thirty-five million dollars worth of product. And we're not going to have the money, then they're going to get upset, then we're going to get set back again, then nothing's going to happen. Another year is going to go by, the city is going to cost us more money and we're going to be back in the, in the same boat with no park and that they're going to have the same place we are now. I don't understand why as a commission up here, we had a beautiful project in front of us, sure, we'd like to have it all, but we are, we can't have champagne on beer wages. I don't know why we have to put something off again, I just don't understand it, we can't make an adult decision up here and move forward. I don't mind, I don't mind the community involvement, that's fine, but you're, the thing's going to happen, it's going to turn into a, a free for all. You know, I'm, I'm in support of the program, I think they've done a good job, I think they've worked hard at it, I think the community would like it, I think we should move forward with it, that's my opinion.
Thank you Commissioner Salvino. Okay, we'll move on.
But I, I think that's part of what we were talking about, is that we're, we're saying, we'll bring this to the community, because, well, but regardless, we would have to bring it to the community no matter what, right?
No.
No? I thought we were supposed to.
You, you can make, you can make a decision today, because you all represent the community. And we can work towards putting some shovels, real shovels in the ground. But, but we'll follow your lead, but we just need to have that, that, that clarity. Because if the, like, what, what Commissioner Salvino says, if, if the community says, oh, no, no. You, we need to put that additional twelve million because we want that second floor track.
We're not going to be able to get that twelve million, I mean, that's not a reality.
Then are we going to come back and you're going to give us that additional twelve million? So this is the hard dialogue, but, but this is the conversation that we need to have here. So.
Well, I mean, I like the project as it is. I, I understand that I would like to see, I would obviously like to see the indoor track. I think that it would be important to the community, but if it's something that we need to make the decision and move forward on it in order to get it done, then I would be fine with moving it forward as it is. Um, because the bottom line is, is that it's not just twelve million dollars additional for this park, it's going to be the same thing for every other park. And you're going to end up, our budget's going to go from forty-eight point four million dollars or whatever it was to a hundred million dollars by the time we're done with this. And we can't do that, because I don't see these prices coming down either. That's everything that I'm seeing, they're not coming down.
We got another beautiful design for Chester Bird that we're going to be bringing to you as well. And the, the longer we keep waiting, so if, we can have this, this community workshop and discuss it. But then if they want it, are you guys going to then put up an additional twelve million dollars? So that way, you know, if, if we're bringing it to the community, we're giving them an option or hey, community, this is just an FYI.
I just know that if you're putting, if you're putting an additional twelve million dollars into the budget for this park, every other community in this city is going to want the additional money put into their parks and their community, as they should. So again, it's going to increase the budget, seventy-five to seventy-five million to a hundred million dollars, which was not what was planned and was not what was intended. And um, I don't even know if it's real, if it's realistic. Frank, I see you nodding your head. I don't think it's realistic to go that high. So.
We just want clear direction, please, so we know what we need to do.
Do I have a motion from the commission for clear direction?
I was, I was, I'm withdrawing that, I'm taking it back, I'm, I'm in favor of what Commissioner Salvino said.
Okay, great, do we have consensus for you Mayor to go back to the community and see if this is what they want? Well, they, they asked for consensus, but, I mean, we only need three for them to go back to the community. I'm asking the mayor.
I'd call to a motion.
What's your motion?
He's asking for a motion from someone.
From you.
I make a motion to go back to the community to ensure that this is what they want, because it is different from what was presented to them.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Joyce.
I have a second from Commissioner Joyce Davis. All in favor? Oh, call roll, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Salvino?
One second, Commissioners.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
No.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes. Thank you. All right, for item three point two, we have a city investment portfolio update by the Chief Financial Officer Frank DiPaolo and the Public Trust Advisors. Uh, before you go Frank, please let it know, be known that the motion passed to bring it back to the community, uh, three to two. Within favor, Commissioner James, Commissioner Davis and me myself and opposed Commissioner Salvino and Vice Mayor Llewellyn. Thank you. Go ahead Frank.
Thank you Mayor, good evening everyone. Um, thank you for allowing us to, to speak to you tonight about the city's, um, city's reserves, talking about money. Last summer, we, one, one of the items from our strategic plan was actually adopting a new investment policy, updating all of our financial policies. One of the things that came out of that was, um, was looking at our reserves that we have and managing them in a more strategic way. Uh, you all know that interest rates are on the rise right now, which actually turns out to be good in this regard for the city, because the investments that we are allowed to invest in are based largely on those federal funds rates that you hear about all the time. So, um, we actually went out to bid and we engaged the firm, Public Trust Advisors, they're here tonight. They, they came before you last summer and they presented their plan for how they're going to invest the city's reserves. And what I can tell you is that due to the, the inflationary environment that we're in, we're actually earning a, a better rate on our reserves that we thought we would at the time. And they're going to talk to you about that and talk to you about some of the reasons why that is. And um, I'm really happy about this partnership that we have with Public Trust Advisors. And um, we're going to have them come up and talk to you about the investments and we'll answer any questions that you have when they're done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiPaolo. Mayor, Vice Mayor Llewellyn, members of the commission, John Grady with Public Trust Advisors, it's great to see you again. Mayor, this is our first presentation to you. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight on a few moments just on the economy, on interest rates, and then a few moments on your investment program, which as Mr. DiPaolo mentioned, uh, was very fortunate actually to launch the program at that time when we saw interest rates move up more dramatically than we've seen in more than a generation. Uh, but from the investment side perspective rather, uh, that is, has been a benefit and will be a benefit for the city's reserve funds for the next few years. Uh, even if we experience a rate decline, because we're locking in these investments uh, for the next, between one and five years. And that continues to, to maintain duration for each of these portfolios we'll mention, but again, protects you, uh, allows you to invest in the, the rates we haven't seen in fifteen years. Mayor, just for your benefit, uh, just to let you know, the city is governed, as Mr. DiPaolo mentioned, by your investment policy statement, also by specific Florida state statutes that govern public fund investments. Uh, and then with that though, is a very narrow universe of fixed income investments. So for your operating funds, by design, uh, they are fixed income bonds rather than stocks or any alternative type investments. And that's due to the primary objective, of course, of safety of principal first, maintaining the appropriate levels of liquidity, uh, and then seeking an op, opportunity for market rates of return or yield. So thought I'd provide a, just a little backdrop on that, on how the investment program has come to be. Brought, I'm joined by my colleague Rob Bettini, uh, we're fortunate to serve you all as your primary relationship managers. Public Trust is over eighty professionals that serve you, we manage more than sixty-five billion in assets, all public funds, just like the city. So this is our primary focus, so. With that, I'll jump right into it and this first slide is, um, am I able to just, just here? Oh, right here in front of me, apologies, thank you. You know, the first slide, it, it really touches on what you've just talked about and that is inflation. Uh, and you, you know, we saw in June inflation hit the highest level in more than four decades at nine point one percent year over year increase in prices. We all know that, not just on these types of projects, but certainly as consumers, we're feeling that across the board. Uh, the good news is, is that inflation has come down from that June peak of nine point one, but it's still very elevated. The most recent reading of six point four percent here for January proves that. And again, not just when we're looking at food and energy costs, it is across the board for, for our expenditures. Uh, you know, just recently, in the last couple of weeks, we saw CPI, PCE, which is the Fed's gauge of inflation, as well as retail sales and other indicators, illustrate that inflation is still, is still there. Uh, and it's not coming down as fast as the Fed would like. But that said, that's helping keep interest rates elevated, uh, so again, if there's a silver lining to that, it is a benefit. Uh, as mentioned by a few comments by the commission, you know, you would, you would need to see inflation drop below zero. You'd have to have negative inflation to see actual prices come down. Uh, so we anticipate uh, rate, uh, price increases to continue in the near term as the Fed fights this, right? As they increase that overnight rate, the idea is to uh, make costs of borrowing higher to slow down the economy. They've started that process last year and will likely continue here into the, into the near term. And that will, uh, we, we'll see this on this next slide, so just briefly on this. Uh, this is the dot plot and really what this does, the Fed updates this once a quarter. All the Fed members provide a vote on where they anticipate that overnight rate to be uh, over the next twelve to twenty-four months. Just to prove how difficult this is and how we do not manage your portfolio nor any of our portfolios trying to predict where rates are going, the gray line on this chart illustrates where the Fed projected the overnight rate to be uh, last December of tw- two thousand twenty-one. They anticipated potentially two to three rate hikes during two thousand twenty-two, meaning a quarter of a percent to potentially three quarters of a percent. We all know now, they raised that rate up four and a half percent, so from two to three rate hikes to the equivalent of fifteen. Uh, and these are from, you know, folks who generally you would hope would know. So again, it's, it's, it's really difficult to predict the future. Right now, the, the blue line you can see here is more recent, they'll come out with another Fed dot plot here in March, at the March meeting. But currently, the expectation is, is rates to be around this five percent level, potentially a little bit higher. Hopefully continuing to slow down the economy a little, and then eventually they would need to cut those rates. This is where your long-term reserve portfolios will protect you, is when that rate cut environment does happen. Uh, you'll have these longer-term portfolios locking in these and again, protecting you. Meanwhile, your liquidity funds, which are managed internally by Mr. DiPaolo and his team, those are, are feeling the impacts, upward impacts of these rate increases as well. So overall, your overall program is benefiting significantly from this current environment from the income perspective. Uh, just quickly on this, there's a lot with these lines, but just wanted to illustrate for us what interest rates have looked like over that fifteen-plus month period, going back to September of twenty-one, where, uh, just to put it in perspective from a dollar amount, if you, if you bought a two-year treasury around September of two thousand twenty-one and bought a million-dollar treasury, it would pay you around two thousand dollars a year, because interest rates are around twenty basis points. Today, that same million-dollar investment is providing over forty-eight thousand dollars a year. So just to put that in a dollar perspective, that is a good thing and that, again, as Mr. DiPaolo mentioned, one of the benefits of, of investing in this current environment is, is will likely provide a significant amount of additional income from this current investment program. And looking at that same chart and just uh, zeroing in here on these, on the fourth quarter of two thousand twenty-two and then uh, through the current day rate, actually as of yesterday, or uh, that you can see where that zigzag line is the Fed funds rate, that is now at four point seven five percent, that's the highest level that that rate has been going back to two thousand and six. Uh, and so the Fed, again, is very challenged and, and will likely continue to raise that rate uh, above the five percent, five percent threshold, again, keeping us at, at levels we haven't seen. The other thing I'll point out though is that blue arrow on the far right-hand side of the chart and that is, just in the month of February and really in the last three weeks, when we saw the inflationary figures, I didn't mention the jobs report, the jobs report came out, almost three times the number of jobs uh, than were expected, which is a great thing, but another inflationary indication. And that has pushed interest rates just in the last twenty-one days or so up a, a half a percent or fifty basis points. Uh, so again, a lot of volatility out there, a lot of uncertainty. Uh, you know, a lot of people are questioning where, where the economy is headed, but again, the good news is there seems, seems to be strong growth in jobs. Uh, and the consumer seems to be very resilient and that's what's helping keeping these interest rates higher and, and keeping the Fed really on their task of, of raising that overnight rate. And from that, this is what it looks like from a yield curve. We show you the yield curve from a one to five-year maturity, because that's your portfolio is limited to five years or less and that is generally very, uh, very common with public funds, that limits the volatility of, of investments within your portfolio. And so just again, looking at that where we were a, a little over a year ago, then at your fiscal year, or pardon me, in November, uh, just after your fiscal year-end is that light blue line and then really just in the last couple of days or Feb- February twenty-fourth, in fact, you can see with that gray line. So again, great news, rates remain elevated. The one uh, comment I'll make and we'll talk about this at future presentations as we see the economy unfold here in two thousand twenty-three, is you can see it inverts, meaning that as you go further out on the curve, you see some lower interest rates. It currently on our chart is peaking at the one-year area. And when you see an inverted curve, as you've likely have read, that's a big indicator of a potential recession. It's generally been a very good indicator. The question is, how long will it remain inverted before a recession takes place? It's actually been inverted since around June of last year. So when I point that out, I don't want there to be the impression that, hey, there's a recession going to happen next week or next month. Again, the economy seems to be very resilient at the moment, but uh, the yield, shape of the yield curve does indicate that there, the market's pricing in a bit of a slowdown at some point when that does occur. A little bit on the economy, I'll pause, any thoughts or questions from the commission uh, at the moment? And otherwise, I'll jump right into the, your investment program. Okay, thank you. So we, as Mr. DiPaolo mentioned, we worked very closely with him and his team back in the summertime. We appreciate you approving an update to your investment policy, very well written. The next step was to prepare that cash flow analysis. The idea, the idea that, that cash flow is to ensure that whatever investments you're making in these portfolios are identified as core and not needed for liquidity. Mr. DiPaolo and his team maintain liquidity investments here, we manage the reserve for you. And so with those, with the results of that, we created two investment portfolios. The first one you see on this slide is your, what we call your one to three-year portfolio, has an average maturity of around one point eight years. And as you can see from the chart on the bottom right, uh, again, full ninety, ninety-nine percent plus is invested in maturities between one and three years, hence the name of that strategy. Uh, in the blue box highlighted on the top right-hand side, you can see as Mr. DiPaolo mentioned, the, the book yield and market yield. The book yield is one where we really want to focus, that's the income potential uh, for your investment program. And right now, uh, as of the end of January is around four point two, seven, four point two eight percent. Uh, so again, very healthy, uh, you're very well diversified in this portfolio, just over eighty percent in treasuries, twelve point one percent in GSEs and those are Fannie and Freddie Farm Credit, so, so agencies of the government. Uh, and then you've got a smaller allocation to corporate notes. Uh, just as a reminder for corporate notes, anytime we're investing out of treasuries or agencies, we have an independent credit research team that has to approve those names through reviews, ongoing reviews. Once they're approved, then the, the portfolio management team is allowed to invest in those names as long as they're permitted by rating and maturity structure within your policy. Uh, and your, your portfolio is compliant uh, with both your policy and of course, Florida state statutes. Uh, so that's your one to three and then I'll, I'll finish with your other, second portfolio, which complements the one to three-year portfolio. It's a one to five-year. And so this uses, utilizes a one to three-year structure, but also adds in that those maturities between three and five years. You can see this one's uh, more divided between the fifty-eight percent in one to three-year, forty-two percent out in the three to five-year area. Again, to further diversify and hopefully provide enhanced income opportunities through interest rate cycles. Uh, both of these portfolios, uh, as we invested during, again, a period that we haven't seen in, in more than fifteen years, uh, where investments in between three and a half to more than four and a half percent. And that's what's led again to these uh, very healthy book yields. You can see, this portfolio has an average maturity structure of two and a half years. So again, balances out the one, the one to three-year as well as your liquidity program. And overall provides really a, a good diverse investment program overall to protect you in both a rising and declining interest rate environment, while still focusing on a safety of principal first objective for your investment program. We, we meet with Mr. DiPaolo uh, and his team at least once a quarter. Uh, we have conversations a little more frequently than, than that, just to talk strategy, any type of market or economic updates and we value that communication certainly. So I'll pause there with my comments and make sure I answer any questions that you may have on, on the investment program here at the city.
Any, any questions, comments? Thank you John, great, great presentation. So you're saying we're in a good position?
I believe you are sir, you know, most, did I say that several times? Uh, I apologize for being repetitive there, but uh, mo- the main thing I want to focus on is, is that they are uh, the safety of your investment program. But we appreciate the partnership with the city, Mr. DiPaolo, and thank you for this time this evening.
Thank you very much and, and thank you, Mr. DiPaolo, for all your work, doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now we have a city manager presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Team, that's on the dais, the City Team that's here with us, residents that are here with us, special guests and the residents that are watching us at home. Today's is, is bittersweet because we're, we're going to be losing to retirement a truly remarkable individual. And kind of reminding me of how old I am and Fernando, right? How old you are too and things like that? So it's, it's, the, the baby boomers are, are really reaching maturity, like, like a good bottle of wine. With that said, our city clerk that, that has been with us for more than ten years in the capacity of city clerk and also in the capacity of deputy city clerk has truly been a remarkable partner and, and, and someone that has really represented what rises, a respect, integrity and, and bringing forward a standard of excellence for, for our city. And from day one, as I was assessing my team of department directors, I knew for sure that, that Tom was, was a keeper. We have learned a lot from each other and we have a tremendous mutual respect, as does all the rest of the department directors, deputy directors. That's why they're here. His employees and Erica, who has kids at home but is here, is a testament of the, the individual that, that Tom is. I know that the relationship that he has with Eve, the, the relationship that he has with, with Lori, the relationship that he has with, with all of us. We, we don't always agree with each other, but we're very respectful from, with each other, and we continue to learn a lot from each other. Tom has been working since he was, well, let's just say he's been working for a very long time. He's been working since, since back in the seventies. He, he comes to us from the great state of Kansas and, and his work ethic is old-school work ethic. And we thought that we had been faced with challenges when we had dealt with, with hurricanes here in South Florida. But it really wasn't until COVID that we were really, really dealt a hand that we didn't even know, you know, what were our next steps in regards to safety and continuing the work on the city. So whether it was Frank or our IT team or Candido or Linda, but continuing those, those meetings and getting the information out to the people and having elections for the people, we didn't miss a beat. And you really don't know what people are made of until you see them face great challenges. You don't know, but when a captain is dealing with rough seas, you really know what type of captain he or she is. And we've dealt with some major challenges from the beginning when we were working together that our budget wasn't where it needed to be, our investments weren't where they needed to be. But we have made major strides in this city to move the city forward, and we could not have done it without this team and without this city clerk. Tom, just today, we, we were just emotional when we were setting up for the commission meeting and talking to Aaron and talking to Tom, because you don't replace people like that. Some shoes you will never fill again. He's been working, leading a committee of five people trying to find us our next clerk. And we don't just look for experience and we don't just look for a resume. There's a certain chemistry when you build great teams. And a lot of you have played sports and you know that. And you see those intangibles that are not on a piece of paper and it's heart and soul and honesty. And that's who this individual is. Your mom and dad and your grandparents and the people that raised you should be very, very proud because they've done a great job with you. And no matter what, no one ever intimidated this man. And he always stood for was, what was truth and what was right. And these are the type of people that we retain, and these are the type of people that we recruit in the city. So I'd like to bring all my department directors of, as we make this, this presentation to our, our outgoing city clerk. Come up here, Tom. Come up here. And you guys come. Katya, bring the camera around here. Oh, there you are. Thank you. So this is something that we got on, on your behalf and on our behalf for our city clerk. But before you open it, before you open here, why don't you have the mic to yourself? We'll just stand back here.
I think you've said quite enough. Thank you, manager. You know, I'm not a very good public speaker, but I would, I would like to thank you. And I wanted to tell you, you all know this, this person, this person fills every unforgiving minute with sixty seconds worth of distance run. And I feel honored and privileged for have run, having run beside her for four years. I truly mean that. And I thank you with the commission. I have the utmost respect for all of you, City Attorney Bootsis. There's too many team members to name individually to thank, but I particularly like to thank the city clerk's team, Aaron and Erica, who have made the city clerk's office shine. Thank you. Now, what am I doing?
So you know that we do everything in style, right, Commissioner Davis? You know those old scissors, remember? So we wanted you to cut open your present with these fancy scissors, Commissioner James. I know that you, so we want you to open up your present.
Are they sharp?
Yes.
That's what I'm afraid of. I'll speed this along. It's a long agenda. Whatever it is, it's heavy. Oh, mine. That's beautiful. It says Thomas Schneider, City Clerk, in gratitude of your exemplary service, 2012 to 2023. Thank you so much. For something else? How do you know? I've always felt a city clerk should be seen and not heard, so excuse my nervousness. It's a beautiful ink, sorry, it's a beautiful ink pen. It says City of Dana Beach, Thomas Schneider, City Clerk.
So we can write to us.
I'll write many, many letters. Thank you so much. Oh, no.
And this is your ten-year anniversary pin?
Oh, thank you so much.
We have a new PIN program now.
Where's that Linda?
Where's that Linda and her PIN program? There you go, your ten years. Both our hands are shaking, huh?
I know, right? I want to say one thing about Linda. She's the mother I never thought I'd wanted. I had a, a good mother and, and, but I've always felt like she's sort of a mother to me. And like all mothers and sons, they don't always see eye to eye, but mothers always win out. So thank you, Linda.
I know I'm gonna say some words for you, Tom, up here on the commission, and I know Commissioner James would like to say something.
Hey, Tom. Are you gonna miss me, Tom? Didn't have very much, listen, Tom, Tom's sense of humor, he has been one of the most unbiased, non-political people that have been in this city, and I am thoroughly thankful for that. I, I respect you, what you stand for, you know, you always tell me what I can't do and I always tell you what I'm going to do. And we, we have our tussles back and forth, but I just want to thank you for bringing quality leadership to this city and to the city's clerk's office. There has never been a scandal. Louise left it in good hands, and now I know you are going to leave it in good hands as well. I hope you enjoy retirement. Stay retired. Don't be like those people that retire for two months and, and miss work. But I, I'm gonna miss you. I'm gonna miss you. I'm gonna miss your blank stares like you're staring at me right now, but you're probably really happy on the inside.
I've honed, I've, I've honed that skill for years now, the blank stare. Thank you.
I know you're gonna miss all of the election drama that happens. It's so, I, I bid you farewell and, and just very happy to have crossed paths with you and, and wish you the best.
Thank you, Commissioner James. Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Just very briefly, because we already talked upstairs, so you're just, just a great human being is who you are. I'm a little emotional. I'm not gonna give you any more heart attacks, right? So that's good. We're done with that, because I know they're right, don't I, how many times that he was worried I wasn't gonna get reports in on time and that sort of thing. But I will tell you that Tom and I got to know each other pretty well during COVID because at the time I was mayor, so there were a lot of things that needed to get signed and last-minute orders and things like that. And there were a lot of last-minute running around and showing up at city hall so that we could get some things done. And I really do appreciate that because we were all kind of navigating new territory together. And it was an experience I'll never forget. Anyway, and I'm sure you won't either, but I just.
Nor me.
Exactly, I know. But I do want to thank you for all of your service, and you've, you've done such a great job. And I said before, you know, nobody, when Louise left, it was, oh my God, Louise is leaving, but you, you did such a great job and, as our city clerk. And again, you're just a great human being, so I'm really, I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate it.
Tom, you were my only person that I knew on the city staff up until I was elected. And to be honest with you, you set the tone for me and you treated me with respect and professionalism, and you set the tone for the whole staff. And I really appreciate that. And wow, look what just came up on my desk. I have a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor, City of Dana Beach, Florida, presented to Thomas Schneider, our city clerk, CMC. Whereas the office of the city clerk is a time-honored and essential part of local government throughout the world and is one of the oldest professions in public service. And whereas the City, Dana Beach, City Clerk's office is responsible for citywide records management, provides assistance and information to all city departments and the public, and serves as the supervisor of elections for Dana Beach. And whereas Thomas Tom Schneider, City Clerk, CMC, has announced his retirement effective March tenth, 2023. And whereas Thomas Schneider began his employment with the City of Dana Beach on May twenty-first, 2012, as a deputy city clerk and was promoted to the position of city clerk on April fourteenth, 2018. Tom is a member of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks and receives certi, certified municipal clerk certification on two twenty-eight, 2006. He is also a member of the Florida Association of City Clerks and the Broward County Municipal Clerks Association. And whereas Tom has provided faithful and professional services to the city, to the Dana Beach team, the elected officials, and the residents of our great city. And whereas Tom is famed for his wry sense of humor, his strict adherence to agenda timelines for the commission meeting agendas, his immaculate record-keeping, his fastidious administration of city elections, and is city renowned for his wordsmithing and grammar skills. And whereas Tom is an exemplary city team member who embodies the principles of rise, respect, integrity, and a standard of excellence, his presence in city hall will be missed. And whereas the City of Dana Beach congratulates Tom Snyder on his retirement and extend our gratitude and appreciation to him for his many years of exemplary service as city clerk. Now, therefore, on behalf of the City of Dana Beach City Commission, I, Archibald John Ryan the Fourth, Mayor of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim February twenty-eighth, 2023, as Tom, Thomas Snyder Day in the City of Dana Beach, Florida. And I do congratulate him for a job well done and wish him continued success and happiness in his retirement, dated twenty-eighth, February, 2023.
Thank you, Mayor. Great job. You don't realize, but I call you the young mayor, but it's said affectionately. So thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. We're gonna get down and do a good picture with you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to our next item of business. Three point four is a special event request from the Community Redevelopment Agency for the Art and Seafood Festival Celebration to be held on April first and second, 2023, at Frost Park from eleven AM to eight PM on Sat, and Saturday from eleven AM to six PM on Sunday.
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Please.
All the department directors have gone through every aspect of the preparation for the seafood festival, and we're ready to go, and we ask for your support.
Perfect, perfect. Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve, Adam.
Do I have a second? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the ayes have it. Okay, for item four point one, we have a proclamation for Black History Month, which I would like to be read by Commissioner Joyce Davis.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Whereas Black History Month is a national event celebrating the contributions of African-American people in their struggles for freedom and equality and their part in the development of our nation's history. And whereas in nineteen twenty-six, historian and author Carter G. Woodson, who is known as the father of black history, studied, study introduced Negro History Week as a reaction to racism and to highlight the role African-Americans have played in the development of civilization. Since that time, Negro History Week has been expanded to encompass the entire month of February and, and has also undergone, gone a change in terminology. Whereas in nineteen eighty-six, Congress passed Public Law ninety-nine, two forty-four, which designated February nineteen eighty-six as National Black His Afro-American Month. And whereas this year's theme for Black History Month, Black Resistance, takes a look at how African-Americans have fought repression from America's earliest days, from escaping the plantation to the rise out of poverty and the struggle for equal housing and education, to struggle for voting rights, the resistance.
Sorry.
Lives on even into the twenty-first century. And whereas Black History Month offers us an opportunity to honor pioneer families and past elected officials of African-American descent who have served our great city. Leola Collins of Collins Elementary School, Jacob Robinson, African-American postal clerk at the post office, Thomas Hampton, the first African-American policeman, Vita Mae Peterman, the first African-American on the Dana Vita Mae Peterman, the first African American on the Dania Beach Housing Authority, Horace McCutcheon, the first African American grocery store owner and the first to serve on the Dania Beach Code Enforcement Board, Mildred Jones, community activist, Dr. Von D. Mizell, who helped found the NAAC Broward Chapter in 1945, J.A. Ely, first African American principal of Addicks High School, Boisean Waiters, first African American commissioner, Chester Byrd, first African American mayor, and Bobby H. Grace, first African American mayor and commissioner. And whereas the Dania Beach honors its currently serving African American elected officials, Commissioner Joyce L. Davis, an educator who is pursuing PhDs in human services with a concentration in community leadership and intervention, and Commissioner Tamara James, the youngest mayor elected to the city of Dania Beach and previously a professional athlete. And whereas June 19th has a special meaning to African Americans called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th has been celebrated by African American community as the emancipation day for over 150 years. On February 9th, 2021, the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach adopted Resolution Number 2021-020, specifically recognizing Juneteenth as an official city holiday for its residents and employees. Now, therefore, on the behalf of the City Commission and Mayor Archibald J. Ryan IV, Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of February 2023 as Black History Month in the city of Dania Beach and encourages our citizens to join in learning about celebrating the contributions African Americans have made to the world, to our to our country and to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Davis. Okay, now we have citizen comments. And we have one citizen. His name is Mr. Ram. If you could please come up to the podium. Oh, this is Lucky Fish. Oh, you know, this is citizen comments. Okay, all right, we'll wait till we get that on. Okay, we'll hold this off till we get to the item. All right, public safety reports. Come on up, Captain Marks.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'll try to be brief here. Yesterday, we executed a search warrant off of Northwest Fifth Ave. It was a target we had been watching for quite some time. We were able to gain enough intel to have a judge sign a warrant for us. We had our SWAT team execute the warrant with our crime suppression team. Got a lot of crack cocaine that was packaged, ready for sale inside, oxycodone, loaded Glock with an extended magazine. The target is a four-time convicted felon. He admitted to possessing the narcotics and the gun. He was charged with possession with intent to sell cocaine within 1,000 feet of a church, possession of oxycodone, and possession of firearm by a convicted felon. Last week, we got a report of a county transit bus that had a passenger on board that was sitting down loading bullets into a magazine. Fortunately, the somebody on the bus called and we were able to locate the bus and detain the suspect. The suspect had two loaded firearms on him, the ammunition and 50 grams of marijuana packaged for sale. The suspect had also been arrested several times for weapons type violations and and making threats in Dania and Hollywood. We applied for a risk protection order on him too because of the past and the the odd behavior that was he was performing on the bus. Another good case we had, our detectives recognized a vehicle leaving Dania Point as one being involved in numerous thefts and business burglaries within the city. Surveillance of the suspect led detectives to a RV camper that he had stolen the day prior and a portable generator that was stolen from a job site in Dania Point. The suspect was charged with his connection in the numerous crimes and numerous pieces of stolen property that were recovered. All of his charges, nine counts of grand theft, five counts of petty theft, three counts of burglary, and one count of grand theft auto. All right, last meeting, I spoke a little bit about our activities over on Southeast Fifth Avenue, referenced speeding and traffic complaints. I mentioned that I had sensors installed that the commission approved for purchase a while back. On our law enforcement side, we we conducted approximately 30 hours of patrols and and operations in the area. During the the study, which 25, approximately 25,000 vehicles traveled each direction during the study. That's that's a lot of traffic. Most of the traffic's during the day. And also, the the vehicles during the day were 20 to 44 miles an hour average. The vehicles traveling overnight and early morning hours, they got up there, there wasn't as near as much traffic during those times. But some of the the cars were going 55, a couple others, there was one that was 75. It might have been one of our police cars or ambulances going to a a call. We don't know that. But I have the printouts. I provided them to the the city manager and we've gone over the results. It breaks it down as to, like, right here, going southbound on Southeast Fifth Avenue. During the study, 110 vehicles were going 15 to 19 miles an hour. 30 to 34 miles, 10,322. So it breaks it down. You can see exactly during what time the vehicles were traveling and at what speed. Our neighborhood support team participated in an event with the United Way. It was dealing with the youth. They were able to do team building exercises and they held a roundtable discussion with them. They also conducted a law enforcement safety presentation to 36 preschoolers. They had the opportunity to to hang out with our our detectives, learn about different types of police work, and go over how to be safe if they're ever away from a parent. That completes my report.
Any comments? All right, thank you for your thorough report, Captain Marks, and your diligent effort in staying on top of crime and working on keeping Dania Beach safe.
Thanks, sir.
Chief Pelisser, if you would.
I will. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Staff. I always forget the City Staff, so I'm not forgetting them ever again, I promise. And to our great citizens of Dania Beach, I would like to start off by thanking the commission, city manager, city team for helping me secure the staffing level that we need to make the city safer. I have the paperwork right here in my hand that's signed by the city manager, the commission, and our sheriff, and the sheriff that gives our citizens the second rescue responding out of our Fire Station 1. And the official start date will be April 8th, 2023. When I first started as your district chief, I brought up how busy our current rescue is and the concurrency of call volume that we get in our city, which is 65% of the time, we get one call, we get a second call. And most times, we get a third call. So our guys were getting beat up and it was it was tough, you know, getting getting these calls and and getting the city covered. So you heard this, you heard me loud and clear, and you supported me. And I thank you for that. And the men and women at the fire station, thank you for that. I'll be reaching out to Maxine to schedule a push-in ceremony for our new fire rescue truck, as well as meeting the new crews coming here to Dania Beach and a fire station tour with all the renovations that we put together over the last couple of years. And again, I couldn't do this without your support and, you know, without your help. So thank you very much. The CEMP Plan, the City Emergency Management Plan, I'm currently working on that, but that brought me to, as a reminder, that Hurricane Ian was the third costliest weather disaster on record and the deadly deadliest hurricane to strike the state of Florida since 1935. Tonight, I would like to recognize two of the crew members that are assigned to my Fire Station 1 here across the street who responded to Fort Myers and provide a relief to the people who needed our assistance. Captain Captain Richard Young responded as part of the Union Task Force and assisted firefighters from that community. And driver engineer Jordan Elrod responded as part of the USAR Task Force 2. He was one of the initial first search and rescue teams. So they're here in the audience. If you guys can come up. I'd like to thank thank them because without people like this that sacrifice and go do these things that most people don't want to do, you know, it makes our fire department better, it makes our city better, and you know what? It makes me a better person. So thank them for, you know, going all out and, you know, putting themselves out there on the line. And with that, that completes my report. And if you have any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Commissioner Salvino?
Chief, you know, we had two rest, the Station 117 for so long without the extra rescue truck that's coming. And I hear all these reports of how many times these guys are running their rear ends off out there. What happens when there's, the calls are coming and there's nothing to respond to? Are you still interlocal with Hollywood on that?
We don't have, we used to have an automatic aid agreement with them, which was basically as soon as we got dispatched and our units were busy, automatically, they they came to the call. That ended when we went down to a two-person rescue about six, seven years ago. Since then, we put back the third person on our rescue, but we never got that automatic aid back. However, since then, we have what's called the closest unit response, which now basically does the same thing. So whenever there's a third call, we'll either have one of our units from Port Everglades, one of the units from over at Snyder Park, or one of the Hollywood units comes in. Now, depending on where the call is, like the Liberia section, Station 5, which is right down the street from Liberia, will be the first responder now because they are the closest unit. You know, over in the Alanco property, over by Station 17, which is where the it's all Hollywood warehouses, that area, we're closest, so we're gonna respond there first if there's an emergency, just because we happen to be the closest unit. So it's working itself out. Is it perfect yet? No, it's not, but we're definitely, it's a step in the right direction. And this is something all the Fire Chiefs Association put together.
That's good. Thank you for the information.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, gentlemen, for the information and your continued leadership. Appreciate it. All right, for item seven, we have the consent agenda. Are there any items that we wish to remove from the consent agenda? Commissioner James?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Before you do, I just need to read the two ordinances at the end. It's on number nine, it's ordinance number 2023-003, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach approving an interlocal service boundary agreement with the City of Hollywood and Broward County for the contraction of certain lands located within the jurisdictional limits of the City of Hollywood and the annexation of the land by the City of Dania Beach, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. This is a new first reading. Number 10 is ordinance number 2023-004. It is an ordinance of the city amending Chapter 2, entitled Administration, Article 3, entitled Supplemental Code Enforcement Procedures, Code Enforcement Citation Program at Section 2-58, entitled Schedule of Code Enforcement Fine Civil Penalties, to clarify the fee schedule, providing for codification, conflicts, severability, and an effective date. This is also first reading from Community Development. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. I have a motion. Do I have a second? All right, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it unanimously. Thank you.
Would you like me to read the next ordinance?
Please.
It is an ordinance number 2023-005, under 9.1 Public Hearings, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, amending Chapter 16, entitled Vacation Rentals, Section 16-2, Vacation Rentals of the City Code of Ordinances. To require additional information be included on the mandatory posting of each vacation rental location, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. This is also first reading, Community Development.
Good evening. Corinne LaJoy, Assistant Director in Community Development. This is a text amendment amending the vacation rental regulations to include language identifying the garbage collection schedule, the the recycling collection schedule, as well as the appropriate items to be recycled. We're adding it to the text amendment so that it can be included in the application. And therefore, we can make sure that it's posted on the site when we do inspections of the property. This is something that was raised by the Green Advisory Board as a concern. So we think these are our steps to help alleviate some of those issues that they raised. I'm available if you have any questions.
Have a motion? Oh, it's a public, yeah, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this item? I have a motion from Commissioner Salvino. I have a second from Commissioner James. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 9.2 is a resolution 2023-022. It is a resolution of the City Commission approving the Seaview at Dania Beach Platte submitted by Dania Beach Rentals LLC for property located at 601 East Dania Beach Boulevard in the City of Dania Beach, Florida, providing for conflicts and an effective date. This is a community development item. It is a public hearing item. Let me also swear in staff and anyone who's going to be speaking on this application. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening. This application is for the Seaview project that's currently located on East Dania Beach Boulevard. The subject, I mean, the property itself was originally approved as the Calm Project. I think we're all familiar with it. At this point, the original approval was in 2019. Originally, there was an entrance exit that was planned on Dania Beach Boulevard. One of the site plan modifications removed that access point. This plat is to remove the turn lane that's identified on the plat. So the plat and the site plan will be compatible. I probably just said everything I wanted to say. This is a copy of the plat. Yeah, the drawing of the plat is really not much to see. It was a perimeter plat and identified the property lines. Staff's recommending approval of the application this evening. And Representative of the applicant is here if you have any questions for them as well.
Any discussion? This is a public item. Does anybody wish to speak on this? Commissioner James?
Oh, I was gonna make a motion to move the item.
Motion to move. I have a second. Do I, all in favor?
Aye.
Item is passed.
Thank you. Item 9.3 is Resolution 2023-023. It is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach approving the site plan and variances for the property owner, City Dania Beach, and the proposed occupant Lucky Fish 2 LLC, a Florida limited liability company for property located at 65 North Beach Road in the City of Dania Beach, providing for conditions, conflicts, and an effective date. This is a community development item. It is also quasi judicial in a public hearing, so Corinne has already been sworn in. Anyone else, though, who would like to speak on this item? Please raise your right hand, including the applicant's representatives. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. Good evening. Corinne LaJoy, Assistant Director. Thank you. Okay, so this is the presentation. This is for the Lucky Fish site plan. I know most of us are all familiar with the location being at the previous location of the Dania Beach Grill on our beach. This is an aerial photo of the location of the property. This is the site itself. So it's it's more than just the area of the previous Dania Beach Grill. It does extend to the north as well. On October 26th of 2021, the City Commission selected a proposal submitted by LM Restaurants in response to the city's letter of interest that went out to redevelop the site. At the city's request, the proposal maximizes location while maintaining the public park space to the south, which is the 2D Adler site. The subject property is the parcel, approximately 0.66 acres of vacant land and is located at the former Dania Beach Grill site. The proposed site includes the parcel vacated by the formal former grill as well as portions north of that site. The proposed site is focused on family-friendly restaurants. The proposed site is focused on family-friendly restaurant with healthy meal options. It is consistent with the city's strategic plan, specifically with Goal Three, Your Hometown in Broward County, a vibrant, sustainable community, as well as Objectives 3.4, having a sense of community, One Dania Beach Community, and Objective 3.5, increase international/national tourism, more visitors coming to Dania Beach to enjoy the community in partnership with the Chamber and other local agencies and publications. It's also consistent with the value to our neighbors and our community in 3.4, variety of community gathering places and destinations, as well as short-term challenges and opportunities. 3.2, expanding the business investment in Dania Beach. This all aligns with the strategic plan that was previously adopted for the city. At this point, the applicant is requesting site plan approval and for the construction of an 8,000-square-foot, family-friendly, oceanfront restaurant known as Lucky Fish. The city team has been working with FAU to secure additional parking on the beach, looking at both short-term and long-term parking solutions. The application itself does require some variances, and part of the reason why is it's, you know, it's a fixed site, it's an odd-shaped site, it's confined by roadways, so all of those things really end up resulting in variances that are generated, and that's true for this application. So the first is regarding to loading spaces. They are able to provide a loading space on-site, but it overlaps with the driveway, and traditionally we don't allow that, you know, double counting of a space. But what they're proposing is that the loading activity occur on off-hours when the business won't be open, so that the loading would happen in the morning. As the business opens, the loading would no longer be utilized, and then parking and the driveway will be utilized. There'll be no conflict with those vehicles coming to offload supplies. The next variance is regarding the vehicle use buffer. They're asking to reduce the five-foot buffer to zero, particularly where that loading space is. They're really trying to maximize the site, and as a result, needed to cut into that buffer a little bit. But keep in mind that that area is also adjacent to the park, so it's not, you know, inflicting onto another development site. The third is the dumpster. Due to the compact irregular shape, it was difficult providing the necessary setbacks, so they're proposing a 10-foot setback where 25 feet is required. The lot depth, again, this is, you know, an existing lot, so it doesn't meet the regulations of our open space zoning district. I think the reason why the open space zoning district minimum lot dimensions are as large as they are because it envisions like a community center that's potentially adjacent to other properties, and this just isn't the case here. It's totally different. So they do need a variance for the lot depth as well as the lot area. The variance in the middle is the building height, and this is really determined by FEMA because of its proximity and east of the coastal construction line, the height of the structure and the occupied floor area is really dictated by FEMA, and that's requiring them to pump up the building as high as they are, 14 feet above grade at this location. The final variance is regarding to side setbacks, and again, you know, as we said before, it's an open space zoning district, so really, you know, the great buffers that are built into the open space zoning district really doesn't apply to this location. It's adjacent to a park. But they're asking to a variance to allow 7 foot 10 inches from the east property line, where eight feet, oh, and eight feet and four inches from the west property line. Both of those, the east and the west, are both adjacent to roadways. It's part of the circulation of the beach, so they're reducing those setbacks in those areas. The Land Development Code identifies criteria for variances, which the applicant has identified in their statement, how they're consistent with those requirements, and it's identified in the staff report as well. And on the screen is the site plan that's proposed. You can see, I think the most prominent part of the site plan is the circular tiki location in the center of the screen. To the north, which is, when you're looking at the screen on the right, that is the open space area, and then to the left is where the restaurant, the building itself, is going to be located. The development consists of 1,721 square feet deck area, 4,000-square-foot tiki structure, a covered band stage on the first level, and the kitchen is required to be elevated on the second level, as we talked about previously. The proposed stage is located at the north end of the site, which is the furthest, you know, away from any adjacent residential. It's more than 600 linear feet away from the closest residential building. The location of the site at the beach allows for the parking located at Ocean Park to be utilized for the new restaurant, and the patrons, just as the patrons of the previous restaurant, the Dania Beach Grill, utilize the beach parking as well. Bicycle parking will be provided on-site. We anticipate that that will be utilized. It is the beach. We anticipate people visiting by bike. And the applicant is proposing to include the city's logo on the construction fence wrap, which does require City Commission approval for the use of the logo, so that's incorporated in this approval as well this evening. Community outreach, the applicant did send notices out to property owners within 1,000 feet of the property, just as the city did. Those notices went out on February 16th in identifying contact information for the development. If they had, if anyone had any questions, they could reach out to the developers, and they would be able to talk about the proposal. I think the applicant might be able to speak to that a little bit further when he speaks. Staff, you know, sent out our notices required by the Land Development Code. We received no inquiries from the public at all on this. Previous to that, however, we did receive people asking for copies of the plans previously, so we did share that information, but no questions or comments came from that to Community Development. The project itself will have to pay impact fees, such as the public art fee, as well as, you know, additional fees at time of permitting, such as police and fire. That's applicable to all building permits. The Development Review Committee did review this site plan on August and again, October of last year. The DRC is made up of staff, including BSO Fire, Public Services, City's Landscape Consultant, and Community Development Planning Division. There are some outstanding conditions that remain that will be made as conditions of approval. They're identified in the resolution, so if the project is approved, those conditions are already in the resolution and will be required to be addressed by the applicant prior to the issuance of the building permit. The approval of the site plan and variances will enable the site to be developed, further activating the beach, which is consistent with not only the city's strategic plan, but also the city's beach master plan. And as I stated before, there are applicable impact fees that will be paid by the project as it goes through permitting. In terms of the recommendation, approval of this Lucky Fish site plan and variances, providing the remaining DRC comments are made conditions of approval and must be addressed prior to the issuance of the permit. I'm available if you have any additional questions, and I know representatives from the restaurant companies here as well to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor, may I just speak to the commission for a moment?
Please.
So just one thing. I did receive two emails from the community. I believe it's from the Renaissance that I forwarded to Mr. Mutsos because he, that's the representative for Lucky Fish, so that he could address those residents directly. Previously, the City of Hollywood did receive a few comments from residents, which I did reach out to and gave them information as it relates to our noise ordinance, as well as the underlying lease agreement and the provisions in that, and that this is a restaurant venue that does have ambient music with up to six special events a year that can be coordinated. But this is not considered to be like a hard rock cafe or something where it's a music venue as the primary goal. This is, as it's defined in the lease, it is ambient music, okay? Mr. Mutsos is here if you have any questions for him, but I just wanted to put that on the record that the City of Hollywood did have some comments that came into them that I addressed directly with those residents, and then I also forwarded some communications to Mr. Mutsos. I'd like to see if there are any disclosures by this commission so that we can do those disclosures as well. Seeing none. But I can remain impartial. Thank you.
Commissioner James?
You want to do a presentation, or you want to talk?
I just wanted to say that Mr. Mayor, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission Members, City Council, sorry, City Staff, we are very, very excited to be coming into the community. As I mentioned in an email last week, we are very, very integral in the communities in which we are involved in. We want to be a thread of that community and really be a place of community congregation and also one where people can come and feel very comfortable, very family-oriented as well. And I also want to say that I did receive communication from the residents of the community next door to us where the project is being built, and I reached back out to them, sent them some emails and correspondence back, and I am here this evening if you do have any questions or if they should have any questions of us.
I do.
Okay.
I'm a visual person. I want to see what the loading space looks like. Where is it? Is it in the front of the building, the back of the building, on the sides?
So Juan Linares is our architect, and he can speak at that.
Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners and City Staff. The loading zone we've created, if we can, does this have the site plan available?
Hey.
Let's see. We can go back.
That's, okay, that's a good.
Yeah, it should be. More technical drawing is what I'm looking for. So you're getting a little preview of the whole presentation. Okay, it didn't show. I can.
That's fine. I probably can understand the colors better than that.
So you had seen this site plan earlier?
Uh-huh.
I'm sorry. The only problem is you need to be on the mic.
There you go.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
We've incorporated the parking, which the previous location did not have, so we're bringing in the parking through this driveway here.
Okay.
Half of the parking is underneath.
Okay.
The other half is exposed on surface. The loading zone that we're providing is actually inside the driveway, sort of inside the property.
Oh, okay.
And it's indicated by this dashed area. That area is only going to be blocking 50% of the driveway, so even for the worst-case scenario, if it's ever being loaded and someone needs to get in and out of the parking space, it can still drive through. It's never going to be a dead end or completely blocked off.
Okay, and the vehicular buffer, I didn't really.
Well, the vehicular buffer, the code requires, and we're only modifying partial. The vehicular buffer is, about 70% of it is being provided on the eastern side of that surface lot. The reason why we requested that to be reduced is so we could provide that loading zone inside the property and also still provide access if need be in and out of the driveway. So the reduction of the buffer is only for the western 30% of it.
Okay, and then the band stage, is there a buffer, or is the music for the band facing to the north or the south, or?
It's on the north end of this square here. So it's on the furthest north part of the property.
Okay.
So you have the tiki structure and the actual kitchen and east patio in the way of that noise and sound traveling south. So it's really more for events that we left this lawn open for. So it's in order to, for ambient sound to be enjoyed by the tiki area as well as the lawn area.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is for Eve. You were speaking about the noise ordinance, so this is a restaurant that's going to have a live band, that's going to have music. They will have to shut their music down, like, on the weekends after 10?
Actually, it's even written into the contract. It's 10:00 PM. That's the longest that they're allowed to have music unless they have the special event permits, which is six a year.
Okay.
And we also put in a noise meter provision in the lease agreement, which is up to 65 dB.
Okay. All right. Close my questions. Thank you.
Well, after 10:00 PM, they're not supposed to.
Okay.
And that was agreed to by the developer, and it was part of the lease.
Yes.
Going back to the comment about the conditions of approval, we've reviewed all the conditions of approval, and we have no issues incorporating, if they haven't been done so already, so we have no issues whatsoever with that.
One last thing as to noise. We did talk about in the lease agreement about getting an acoustic engineer to do some studies to make sure that when they're actually designing and installing all of the equipment and everything, that it gives the most protection to the community, and that is part of the lease agreement as well.
We'll do everything we can to mitigate the sound. Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. Can I open this up for a public hearing? Mr. Eric Ram? Please state your name and address.
Eric Ram, 6051 North Ocean Drive, Hollywood, just across the border from Dania Beach. You might remember, I was here a few meetings ago, and we talked about what we saw as the nexus between the seating of the land from Hollywood to Dania Beach for the parking garage, and we wanted to ask for community involvement in the Lucky Fish project. We were told by the city attorney that it was mixing apples and oranges, and we shouldn't try to link the two. So we understood, and we left it alone, and here we are again. We were invited to come back to the presentation tonight by the Lucky Fish, and thank you for allowing me to speak. We are very grateful for the decibel requirements, the sound engineer, the placement of the facility, the music facility, and what we are left with, though, is that things on paper sometimes don't always turn out exactly the way they are on paper. If you look at our cruise ships that ply the waters here, nobody would think to put a cruise ship out on the water without sea trials, without actually seeing how the plans pan out. So what we, and of course, this is a unique situation because we have a restaurant with music that's adjacent to a very densely populated residential area, and the residential area is not in the city of Dania Beach. In fact, no resident, no residence in Dania Beach will be affected by the noise from this facility. It's kind of an unusual situation. So what we are, what we will be grateful for, and we're going to try to work this out with the Lucky Fish people, is to put in place a good neighbor meeting structure where we get together on a regular basis, and hopefully hardly anybody will feel the need to come because hopefully the Lucky Fish people will work it out and will be respectful, as they say they will be, and we do appreciate that. I don't want anybody to think that we're not grateful for the efforts that are being made, and we recognize that. So we would like to work it out with Lucky Fish for a good neighbor meeting so that we test out as we go through the operation of the restaurant and see that the noise is not affecting us in a detrimental way as is the intention of the city. Thank you very much to everybody.
Mr. Ram, thank you very much for taking time out of your day to come out here and address the commission. I appreciate it. If the City of Hollywood wants to de-annex the Renaissancees to us, we'd gladly take them. So for number 10, moving on, for discussion and possible action. Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry, we're still on this. Does there anybody else want to speak on this? Sorry, got ahead of myself. Please, sir, state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Fredo Loenhar. My address is 6051 Tower North from Renaissance. I just purchased a property over there. It was my dream, but mostly recently I'm very scared about to have this Lucky Fish restaurant because it's an open concept and it will be noise with live music. I lived before in a place very noise, and I want to move to a calm place. It was our dream for me and my wife over the gold years, but it's very disappointing when I see an open bar with a live music. This will affect my apartment. I am exactly in front of his property. I am exactly in front of his property and I will be very disappointed. I hope you guys will take care about this. You'll protect us as residents to do not be bothered, not only after 10:00 PM, but before. Because I want to relax during the day, I want to enjoy my time, my view, I enjoy my house, but I don't want to be least amused the whole day, or boom, 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 or some baths. I don't like this. I'm very disappointed of this. I hope you guys can cooperate with us with the Renaissancees to avoid the noise interfere on our building.
Frank, may I ask you, how long have you lived at the Renaissance?
What?
How long have you lived at the Renaissance?
I just moved.
You just moved there?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner James?
Are you finished?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Frank, I appreciate you taking the time out of your evening to come here. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, sorry. I just want to, you want to speak first? Oh, okay. I just want to speak, you can sit back down. Just a moment on understanding where those residents live on a beach near a grill that's had music for a number of years. I personally don't like the ordinance. I feel as if on weekends, when you're on the beach, I feel like 10 o'clock is too soon to be able to cut down music when you have a venue of any type of magnitude. I do understand that, you know, you all value your quality of life, but I think you also have to take into consideration where you purchased your residence, which is on a coast and a beach near a restaurant. I have been to a few places in Hollywood on the beach and they party all night long. And so...
The residents over there complain too.
I don't know. But I just, you know, I, 10 o'clock is the ordinance. That's why I did ask. I think that is a little unfair to Lucky Fish. I think that was put there to appease the residents at the neighboring to the north of the south of us. I'm sorry. But I am looking forward to this project and I do not want to hinder any successes that this project is going to have because we are handicapping attracting patrons to a bar, to a new eatery, because we are telling them they have to play their music loud as they are in the car. And so I hope that all goes well with you and you are brand new here. You probably should have read the room.
Mr. Mayor, may I just address one thing? So the 10 o'clock provision is in the lease itself, but it does provide that a later time could be approved by the city commission. So if it's successful and there are no problems, you can always come back and change that time period. Also, I just wanted to address, I believe a staff person came up to me and mentioned that across the street from the Renaissance is also another open bar, tiki bar with live music across the street. So this should be blend in with the community out there.
The Renaissance also has hurricane-proof windows and doors.
And Mr. Mayor, I would like to put it on the record that working with these folks, you know, in regards to the direction of the music going away from the Renaissance and everything that they've done to work with everybody in the city of Hollywood over there, it's just been, they've been over backwards really in regards to what they could do, so, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes, I just want to add to the comments in that this is something that comes up with every coastal community, every coastal community. There are, Fort Lauderdale had the same issue multiple times. The last time that I remember it coming up was maybe 15 years ago where they had a whole issue with turning down the lights and turning down the music earlier in time because the people who were moving in were complaining. Unfortunately, for those of you who live there, that's, it's part of life living on a coast, in a coastal community. If you're living at the coast, you're going to have other places because people want to go to the beach to eat and drink and have a good time. 10 o'clock's not late. A lot of venues have music much later than that and there are residences surrounding them as well. And as the mayor indicated, the people that live there also complain about the noise as well. I appreciate your concern, I appreciate your complaints, but it is something that just, it happens along the coast of southeast Florida. It's been happening forever. It happens on the west coast too. But this is something that our residents have come to us and have said to us that this is what they want and that this is the type of venue that they want. And the developers and the owners of the restaurant have really worked tirelessly to try to make as many people happy as possible. Not everyone's going to be 100% happy, but they're doing the best they can and they've been very reasonable throughout this entire process. And I don't think they're going to exploit it. I don't think they're going to have a situation where they have, you know, an eight-piece band out there like blaring, you know, trumpets or something at midnight. But they're going to, they are going to have music. It's, and again, it's something that our residents in this city want and wanted then when it was first discussed. So that's who we are, you know, we're here to represent. So, you know, in any event, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Just one last thing.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to recognize that Andrea Wingit from the Community Development Planning and zoning department of Hollywood is here. I think she was here for the inter-local agreement earlier, but she stayed for this as well because of the community concerns.
Thank you for being here. Commissioner Salvino?
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, I don't mean to be disrespectful to you in any way what I have to say. You just purchased a property. You said, "This project's been going on for a couple of years." So whoever sold you the property, I should have pretty much told you what was going on with the clearing of the land and starting to make you aware of what we're doing in our city. As the rest of the commission has told you, there was an old dilapidated building there that was very popular and very loud. And we have made an improvement by changing, putting new park in there for the children, a new restaurant with, that's pretty, it's new, it's safe, it's all up to date. And they've done a lot of work to make sure that the noise ordinance will protect your towers. Just so you know, I've been around here a long time. And I remember when those towers went up, the Dana Beach residents were not happy with those towers going up because they didn't want any towers on the beach next to our beach. But they got them up anyhow. So it works both ways. So I'm just hoping that you enjoy Lucky Fish and can walk out of your place and come over and you'll have fun. And I promise you, just like that with Dana Point, nobody wanted it, now they're all over there. So you'll have a good time, trust us.
Thank you, Commissioner Salvino. Yeah, on the record, I just want to put it that we want to maintain, and we have maintained a healthy relationship with the city of Hollywood throughout the years. Our sister city is very important to us. We share waterways, borders, boundaries, and we want to work with them, you know, just as much as they want to work with us. So we're not, we're not trying to, you know, just as Commissioner Salvino said, they built those towers. And, you know, we tried to bite back a little bit, but we accepted it. And they're there and they're great revenue for the city of Hollywood. And Dana Beach has been there for a very long time, you know, before the Renaissance was built. And we definitely need more entertainment and more activity there. And our residents are salivating for this. And we want to move on this as soon as possible. And that, all I just want to put on the record that we want to maintain a healthy relationship with Hollywood. Commissioner James?
I make a motion to approve item 9.3.
I have a second from Vice Mayor Llewellyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we don't have any discussion and possible action, so we'll move on to the commission comments. Commissioner Davis, we'll start with you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This has been a busy couple of weeks. I have had the opportunity to go to the city of Plantation and with the Broward League of Cities and have a wonderful event with our president of the Florida League of Cities, Jolene Carballo. If you remember, she was here to do the presentation to one of our residents. We also had a, I was also asked to be a guest speaker at Olson Middle School for a fireside chat for Black History Month. It was really good to have the mentor leadership group to participate and have the children to really ask a lot of different questions about government and how one becomes a commissioner and how one becomes a leader in their city. I want to give kudos to Principal Harris for really mentoring those kids and doing an awesome job and giving them different opportunities and leadership opportunities. Bobby Grace and I also were recognized at the Ebenezer SDA Church last weekend where she was honored as the first black mayor of the city of Dana Beach. And I was honored as the first member of the Ebenezer SDA Church in the history of the 60 years of the church. So it was a beautiful service. And Lighthouse for Students, I attended that with Julie Geis, Hammer G., everybody knows Brother Mack, and all of, and Jim Silvernail. We all had a wonderful fundraising event for Lighthouse for Students, so that was great. And then I got to stop by the 114th anniversary of the GMZ AME Church. Congratulations to them on 114 years of existence in the city of Dana Beach. I do want to reiterate, I do understand that the people are gone for Lucky Fish. You all know I go to the beach every single day. And it is something that we, our residents have waited for a long time. But I do want to make sure that we continue our great relationship with Hollywood. I have been talking to the mayor of Hollywood. I talked to Carol Shoeham about creating a 5K beach walk along the beach. And at this point, I wanted to see if there was any positive feedback from Hollywood before I brought it forward. If they weren't interested in doing it, then it didn't really make any sense to move forward. But this would be, basically be from the pier through, it really goes through North Beach Park, which is south, which, it goes from the pier to North Beach Park, which is a Broward County park, but is actually in Hollywood. So basically, what I want to be able to do is to create the markers so that we can have a walk club, so we can encourage healthy fitness in Dana Beach where there's an actual dedicated 5K walk with the markers. And at this point, their parks wants to talk to our parks, but I just wanted to get consensus that it's okay to continue these conversations with Hollywood regarding a 5K path from our city to yours, to theirs. Does anybody else have any objection? Okay, all right, that's one down. And then the other one is the city manager, Candida, excuse me? Thank you. The other item I wanted to discuss with you all is that the manager and I had a wonderful, wonderful meeting with Dana Point last Thursday, really strengthening our partnership with the city. We went through so many things, I think a lot of it we'll discuss on March 16th regarding the advertising and branding. But we have furthered our relationships and we have, at this point, had some conversations, well, I have had conversations with Mark Aptkin, who was looking to further the relationship and expand the Ignite project for next year. And we also have conversations where we've been introduced to representatives from the Dan Marino Foundation to, I believe Dana Point has an event on April 23rd that's coming up and they would like us to, the city, to have some sort of involvement and participation in that. And so just in full transparency, we plan to continue those meetings and conversations to strengthen our partnership with Dana Point. And with that, I am almost done. Last question, sorry. I just have a question for the city attorney because there was some confusion regarding the use of contingency funds that came across my plate. So I want to just make sure that the use of contingency funds is up to the commission. And if there's any stipulations on that, that we just need consensus from the commission in order to use our contingency funds.
Frank, did we ever adopt the policy on the contingency funds?
We have a policy about the grants and donations. It speaks a little bit to the use of the contingency, but it's just anything that essentially falls under the grants policy, the contingency money can also be used for that. Just has to be agreed upon by the commission.
So overall, yes, that is correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure. All right, and then...
I just knew that we also, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I also knew we were talked at one point about a contingency policy, so I just want to make sure if there was anything different in there, but I don't believe there is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner James?
All right. First and foremost, I would like to send my condolences to Jessica Lazana on the passing of her mother, Rose, who is, who runs the Dana Beach Press. You know, beautiful soul, beautiful lady, and she will be missed. She has kept so many of our residents connected because many of our residents, you know, are not on social media, don't really have digital technology to be able to use. And they rely, a lot of people rely on the Dana Beach Press. And so I send my heartfelt condolences to Jessica and her family as well as Commissioner Da... Who was there when the NFL player came to Olson? Mostly, everyone was there? Okay, so you guys remember the comedian that was the host? He passed away. Yes, so Christopher Priester, known as Unc, died suddenly this past, about a week ago. And so definitely sending my condolences to them. He definitely put on a show and I know it kind of hit close to home because we had just saw him. And so he has passed away and so I wanted to give my condolences on the record. Also was invited to do a fireside chat at Olson with the Rise Kids and some other individuals. And so always an honor to give back, especially in our schools. And last but not least, I enjoyed It's Sugar, the grand opening that we just went to. And my son is still on a sugar high from all that candy that I allowed me to give him. I think he was sneaking it because I told him he couldn't have any. So with that being said, I look forward to having community input and a community meeting and seeing how we can move forward with the C.W. Thomas situation. And I look forward to the development of Lucky Fish. I do think that there is opportunity to reach out to corporate sponsors to see if they would like to sponsor parts of our facility. And that would be, that could be a way. I mean, we have Spirit coming right there with JetBlue. They could sponsor different parts of it and I just think that there are ways that we can be creative in getting to yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner James. Commissioner Salvino?
Okay, everything I said, because I did some of it. And I didn't do much this time because I was on a nice cruise. Can you tell my sunburn? And I do want to know that all of you do look like you ate some sugar, just so you know. That's all. I'm trying to say you all look like you gained five pounds.
Thank you, Commissioner Salvino. Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Llewellyn, you're up.
First I'm going to say, that's not very nice. And you missed a really good time at It's Sugar because it was a lot of fun. They don't just sell candy, they have other stuff there too, little gimmicks and stuff that are, it's a fun little place and it was a lot of fun to go attend that. And, but the candy's delicious also, so, anyway. Glad I found a place that has chocolate-covered espresso beans, again. And I'm short and sweet tonight, I was going to mention It's Sugar, but also my condolences to the Lazana family, Jessica and Katie and their families. I know Rose hadn't been well for a while, but this was a very sudden decline and a sudden situation that occurred. So I think we were all pretty shocked when we found out that she passed so suddenly. But she will be missed. She did do a lot for this community. She's done a lot in the past and continued the legacy with her daughter, still running the paper. And I know there's services coming up this weekend for her, I think it's this weekend. So March, no, it's next weekend, so. And she will definitely be missed. She was part of a number of different organizations in the community, not just through the press, so, in any event, I'm keeping it very short and simple tonight, so, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll be brief as well, but first and foremost, I want to bring up what Commissioner Davis mentioned, Mountain Zion's 114-year anniversary. We got not Eric Brown, Pastor Brown, in the stands. And he, him along with a lot of other of our leaders in the community, all attended. And we had a young pastor, very talented, who Mountain Zion helped. who Mount Zion helped, who's also the pastor over at The Grove, Coconut Grove in Miami, and he came, and it was a wonderful service, wonderful service, with Pastor Brown, Pastor Jonathan Thomas, Pastor Wiggins, and, and just to see the connectivity and the congruity of those, of the multiple churches coming together. I know they had little jokes saying, you know, mine's the best church in Dania, but it, it was very touching and moving, and to have a, a church that's been here for one hundred and fourteen years is just very impressive. So I just wanted to touch on that briefly, and also, yes, Rose Lozana was actually close with my family, my company, we've been a long time customers of her, you know, with the Dania Press. I'm personal friends with Jessica Lozana, Bob Lozana works in my office, a very good friend of mine, and nothing but my deepest condolences to go out for the passing of Rose Lozana. True Danyan, a great woman, she kept that paper alive, and it's going to go strong in her memory. Thank you very much. So now we can move on to item twelve and appointments. So we have the Education Advisory Board first. Not yet, still?
I'm, I'm still working on, I have somebody in mind, I'm still working on. But I would, I, I would recommend that we come on.
I, I would recommend that the other two that we, since everybody's interested in continuing to serve, that we continue the ones that are there for the pension boards that are listed.
All right, for the General Employees Pension Board, we have one commission appointment. Louis Romali's term expires March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, he's interested in continuing to serve. Whose appointment is he? Oh, it's a commission appointment, okay, so we can move on from that, if he wants to continue. Commissioner Davis?
I was just going to make a motion to approve all of the appointments, I think that's what the Vice Mayor was saying.
That's what I was trying to say.
If, if no one has an issue, I just make a motion to approve all the appointments.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, all right, the appointments have been approved. Now for the administrative reports with the city manager, Anna Garcia.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, I also extend my condolences to Jessica and the whole Lozano family on the passing of Rose, Jessica's been a tremendous sweet, and one of the very first people that I met when I started working here, so, my condolences. As, as you know, our goal, working with, with the developers, is to ensure that we have an ongoing relationship in regards to all the types of housing that we can bring to our community. One of the things that I've been discussing with the mayor is activating rooftops and having those, those conversations with our developers, how do we grow our footprint of public parks and green spaces? And I just wanted to let you know that we have just received a hundred and fifty thousand dollar check donated to us by the City Place team to be able to expand our green space here where we have that surface parking lot. So as we grow our events here, we're very excited about that, and they kept their word, and we just received their check, so we're very excited about that. On Tuesday, the twenty-first, last week, I had a really great meeting with CRA manager Bill Harris, and the entire team of the, of the Dania Beach Casino, with Christian Toon, a professional boxer, that's been somebody that we've kind of adopted like, like our own. And so we're going to be working with the Dania Beach Casino to bring a, a really tremendous event here to the city. He really wants to work with young people and young boys, to be able to develop them in boxing, so very, very excited about that. But, but more than anything, the relationships and all the people that we met in the casino, and how they want to share, their, all their list of food trucks that they have for the Rock the Block event, and to help us as we move forward with the planning, as we pass the torch from the CRA to working together to bring back Dania After Dark. So it was a very, very successful meeting, as Commissioner Davis mentioned, we also met with, with the folks in Dania Point. What they're doing there in regards to marketing and, and their investments, they're bringing in a, a new director of tourism. And so that return on the investment, when you look at their posts, when you look at their events and the events that are coming, we're going to be working together with the casino and Dania Point to have a twelve-month calendar, so we don't duplicate events, and we continue to have year-round events for all our residents, right here in the city of Dania Beach. We're also exploring two key, two key new positions that are aligned with our strategic plan, and as we grow the special events in, in our city year-round. And that will be a special events manager that will work with our Parks and Recreation Team, not just to, to grow Dania After Dark, but citywide events. Additionally, we want to bring forward a communications and marketing director to team up with, with Hatia. As, as we grow as, as a city, we need to expand our footprint, and communications and marketing is, is key, as you've been having in these workshops. And, and we're, we're extremely excited about all the possibilities, but teaming up with Dania Point, with the casino, with the community, we just had a citywide department director meeting where we're going to be working on a city newsletter that we want to put out there. You know, I want everybody to know how they can reach our mayor, our commission, know exactly that you have a chief of staff, if we have a grant for five hundred thousand dollars out there, we want our residents to know how they tap into it, if we're going to have a meeting at C.W. Thomas. So we're very excited about working together and bringing forward that newsletter upcoming and, and, and really delivering more information to our commission. Today, we had a very successful meeting with Ron Book and Kelly Millet, and the general manager and the owners of TNT. As, as you know, that property is going in, in a different direction as the, the city grows in regards to all those that are investing here. But, but the great thing about the meeting is TNT has, has had such a great relationship for the past thirty-three years, that they want to work with Candido, myself, Eleanor and Corinne to find them a, a place to stay here. So this has been tasked now to be able to find them the twenty thousand square feet that they need. Mr. Mayor, I, I know that you work very closely with, with people here in the community, as, as does, you know, Commissioner Salvino and all of you. So just know that TNT wants to stay here, and they're looking for a facility that has at least twenty thousand square feet, but that was something that made me very happy, when they're happy and they don't want to leave. I have, I have met with the government relations manager with JetBlue, Ms. Martinez. As you know, we're, we're getting very, very close to having the, hopefully the fifth largest airline with the merger of JetBlue and Spirit. They are committed to staying here, and you're talking about one thousand jobs and a big footprint here in our growing city with the merger. So with you passing that item today, and the letter that our city attorney has drafted for me, we will be sending that up to the federal government, and we'll keep you abreast of everything that's going on in regards to that. And on Monday, March sixth, we will have our CIP and Grants Administrator Colin Donnelly, which by the way is doing a tremendous job. I always tell him that his initial CD stands for how great he has done for the money that he's been able to secure for our city, so he's going to be meeting with Congresswoman Debbie Wasserman Schultz, and he will be representing us in a workshop as we continue to tap into, not just state dollars, but federal dollars. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, manager. Now we will move on to the city attorney, Mrs. Bootses.
Thank you. So there are just a couple of things I wanted to bring to your attention. Charter review board discussion, so we, every eight years, according to our charter, we need to do a charter review, and we need to create a board. So I wanted to bring it to your attention so that I can bring it to the March meeting, and hopefully you'll have your candidates that you'd like to appoint to the board. One of the questions I have for you, or, or discussion item on this, is how many members of the board do you want to have? In, the last time you did it, from what I understand, you had ten members and five alternates. I just ask if, you know, do you want to keep that number, you want to have a lesser number? Or an odd number, if you follow me, because you can, you can have a tie. And we've had a lot of problems filling boards, as you know, we've reduced the number of board members in the past for other boards, like the Art Board we got rid of, and I think we even got rid of the Aviation Board, and we reduced the, the number of people in other boards, so that was a discussion item I wanted to have with you.
Vice Mayor?
You won't have an issue filling this board. I, I mean, I, I can tell that I personally have had at least half a dozen people approach me and ask me about it already, who are very, very interested in, and I'm sure the others have had the same, have had the same experience.
So do you want to keep it the same?
I, I think we need an odd number, I'm not sure we're, how we're going to.
Do you want to do nine?
Well then that means, either that or fewer alternates.
Seven?
Seven.
I, I know the last, I served on this board the last time we had it, and it was an absolute mess. I also want to ask, because it was very disheartening to serve on the board and not even be able to present to the commission. So I don't even know what the role of the board is, because what we presented to the commission didn't even matter, they already knew what they wanted to do, and they didn't even hear from us. So I don't know what the process really is, because that's my only experience that I have, but if it's that same process, I, I don't even want to visit it, because people volunteer their time and, and come and, and try to make the best decisions, and then we still, as a commission, decided to do whatever we wanted to do. So I would need to know what the guidelines are and everything else, because it, it, it was, it was an absolute disaster last time.
So the board, according to the charter, is discretionary as to, you know, what you as a commission do, but we could add in to the resolution, creating the board, that there would be a presentation by the board, giving the recommendations to the, the commission, so that you, you get to hear it. I would recommend that, I mean, you should hear from them.
I think that's the only way, they would have to present it to the board.
I would like for that to be required.
Okay, and you're okay with the change to then seven members?
I'm fine with seven.
And then I guess three alternates, just in case?
Well, we'll just have to figure out, like Commissioner Salvino said, who gets the extra?
Maybe it's two at large by the city commission?
That's what I was going to say, maybe each of us have one, and then we have two commission members that are on the charter review board.
Okay.
I mean, commission appointees.
Got it. Sorry. Okay, thank you for that. The next item is, I just wanted to give you an update on our negotiations with FAU. The manager came up with this idea that, that we met with in December with FAU to use their existing parking lot while we're waiting to build the parking garage. So the idea would be for city staff, quarter-deck employees, and Lucky Fish employees to, once they're up and running, use the parking lot for FAU on the weekends. That way, it would alleviate a lot of the spaces that are in the city's parking lot, parking lot. The reason it's limited to those three is because the Navy is there, there are concerns about security. We would have our security guard parole the area, we're waiting to just hear, FAU is amenable to the idea, they're looking at a one-year contract first time around, just to see that, you know, make sure everything works right, and they're trying to give us our terms, which is probably some sort of maintenance for the gate that is in front of the parking area. But I should receive that by next week, I did reach out to them, they needed to internally go through a few more hoops before they could present their proposal to me. The next two items that I wanted to talk about, oh, I'm sorry, any questions?
Yeah.
Sorry, I-
That's why they call Blink and Light here.
I apologize, I can't see it.
You know, we're talking about using the FAU parking lot for the parking for the quarter-deck employees and, and so on, you know, there's going to, that's a great idea and stuff, but just to reach out a little bit further, we're going to have a construction site going there, where are they going to park for the construction as well? And I think that, you know, we need to look at all that area down there and have it all kind of planned out ahead of time, so that we don't run into traffic jams and utilizing it, and it needs to be very clear to all those people that if they're parking down there, they're going to get taken if they, if they're, you know, a construction worker, that this lot needs to be used, or they're going to have to, either the companies need to figure out something to shuttle in the employees and leave their equipment here, so I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud.
Yes, and, and in addition to our meeting and our conversations with FAU, we also had a very successful and very good meeting with the Dania Beach Casino as, as a future site, so, short-term, long-term, FAU, the casino, everybody's working on board to be able to facilitate parking for us.
Okay, because you know, the, the other thing is, when you mentioned about the parking for Lucky Fish, while they're there, I'm hoping by the time that Lucky Fish opens, we're going to have a parking garage already.
Your mouth to God's ears. Yeah, that's, that's-
Well, you know, it's both, if we, once we get this passed, I mean, it's, and go through the thing, they haven't got the permit for Lucky Fish yet, you're both looking at at least a year plus on each, once, it could, they could coincide together, that's where the parking problem is really going to come in then. Just, just a point.
Yeah, this agreement's for the next year.
Pardon me?
This agreement is for the next year.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
So I don't think they'll start construction in that time.
We'll see, I hope they move along a little bit, I'd just like to do anything else. All right, thank you, thank you. Sorry.
If there are no other questions, the other two items are both related to, oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner James?
Yes, I did have the same conversation with the city manager about possibly utilizing the Dania Beach Casino, or the casino at Dania Beach. And I, I do want to get something more formalized if we can, I know that you talked about maybe shuttles, or I'm not sure of how far out we still are of that just being conceptual, or just a thought. But I, I do think that with the construction of Lucky Fish, without the construction of Lucky Fish, we have to shut down the parking garage, I mean, the parking lot. So we definitely need to be ahead of the curve, ahead of the game, and already have those conversations and those plans in place, in case we need to utilize them, especially with, with the casino.
Our, our goal would be, we have the casino, and we've already met with them, but when we went to check out, Candido and I went a couple of times on, on the weekends, on Saturdays and Sundays, and during the week it's empty, Saturdays and Sunday, there's nothing there. So we're looking at approximately one hundred spaces that they have. So I think they, they need to see this, this relationship with the, all the quarter-deck, all the Lucky Fish, all the city, you know, vehicles parking over there, and if everything goes well, I think that we might be able to expand on that until we build the, the parking garage as, as a secondary space.
Commissioner James, I just have a question, are you suggesting that we get like the architectural plans started?
Not necessarily architectural, I, I just think, so, for instance, if we're going to shuttle them, if, if it's a possibility to shuttle the workers, it was supposed to be for the workers and everything else, right? If we were going to shuttle them to the casino, if there's not space there, we always have space here in our garage, it's just a little further down the street. I know that a lot of the employees at the airport park off-site, far away, and, and they get shuttled, so it's not, I think we just need to be more creative, and not necessarily that it has to be architectural, but maybe think about purchasing a shuttle. I mean, we've been talking about different means of transportation, and so I think that would be the perfect opportunity, we have enough time to really think about those options, to maybe shuttle them to, to our parking garage, and then we don't have to pay anything or make any type of agreements.
You just gave me an idea, because what, what Eva's been working on is to have the employees of the quarter-deck, the employees of the Lucky Fish, I think that we can amendment, put an amendment in there and put the construction employees of-
Correct.
Of, of Lucky Fish too.
At the cas- at the casino or in FAU?
I mean, if we can get them at FAU, the closer the better.
But remember, FAU is only weekends.
I'm, I'm talking about, if we're going to shuttle them, we can shuttle them here to City Hall, it's not that much further. Our parking lot, our parking garages, our, our parking garage, I don't think is filled to capacity on the weekends unless we have, you know, Dania After Dark, maybe, but I think there's opportunity to use our own space, and then you're still driving people back here to City Hall.
The key would be to align our, our transit, and I know that Fernando and Denzer are working with, with the, with the transit component, to be able to align, if we were going to do it, whether it's here or at, at the casino, the, the pickup time, if we're going to be transporting people, and include that as part of our, our route to the beach.
Deputy Manager?
Thank you Mayor, Candido Sosa Cruz, Deputy City Manager. In regards to the construction workers, the development Lucky Fish has to get an off-site location where, kind of like what happened with Celest, where the construction workers will be parking, and they have to be shuttled to the construction site. So they, they have to take care of that, they are aware in all developments, that's kind of standard business. As far as the different plans, we, we're working on a Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, and Plan D. The, the, the FAU parking lot is our, is our first plan. We're also looking at the Ocean Park Complex and seeing where else we could add parking. Our, one of, our parking consultant has, has already identified at least twenty, thirty, forty additional parking spaces that could be created within the compound itself, Ocean Park. Additionally, as mentioned, we're looking- Additionally, as mentioned, we're looking at a shuttle, we're working with Broward County, and as you know, Broward County provides us funding for our current shuttle, they've reached out to Fernando, our Director of Public Works, and said that they are willing to discuss with us additional funding for microtransit, which is like the freebie, there's other types of transportation that's not shuttle-related. So we're looking at all the different options, not just the FAU parking lot, not just the Ocean Park additional parking spaces, not just the casino, as the manager mentioned, they have already verbally agreed to have the, to give us approximately 100 parking spaces at the casino if we put a stop, either a shuttle stop or a microtransit stop. So we're looking at all the options, even possibly our parking garage, if we have shuttles that go to the beach and come back, but we are looking at all the options at the table to see what will be the most effective and what combination will work for our residents.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Some of what I was going to say was already said, so I was going to suggest the city parking garage, which is a good idea. But also, I mean, we have other spaces, we have Frost Park, we have, you know, because that construction isn't going to be taking place for a bit, we also have IT Parker. There, I mean, there's lots of different places that we could look for different parking availability, and especially when you're talking about restaurant employees, there's only certain times of the day generally when you see people coming and going for different shifts. So just, you know, I'm glad, I'm just, for one, very glad to see everybody working well together to try to find a resolution to this at this point in time, so.
Vice Mayor, as Candido said, you know, and he, thank you for reminding me, we're looking at, we never look at one option, we're looking at right now like five different options.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right.
I didn't want to jump it too fast, so the last two are related to, well, the city logo and the Dania Beach Lions Club pin. So in front of you is a picture of the pin, and I believe all of you should have received a pin tonight.
Yep.
Because I know I did. It's, the only thing that they've used for the Lions Club is the shape of our wayfinding signs. I don't think this is something we need to approve, but in an abundance of caution, I want to let you know, they use the shape of the wayfinding sign for their buttons, and just want to make sure you're all aware of it and okay with it.
I think it's great, it's, I respect them also for asking for permission, even though they probably didn't have to.
Lastly, the use of the city logo for City Place groundbreaking, they'd like to use it for the groundbreaking. Eleanor, do you want to say anything on it? And also for the screening around the property. Well, the thing is, according to our logo guidelines, there's, we have to ask, unless you want us to change the logo guidelines to say that for construction projects, they can automatically use our logo for the screening and for the groundbreaking.
Can we just change it to where it just goes to community development? I don't want to just give everybody permission and then it doesn't follow brand guidelines, but they could just, they can handle it.
Okay. I'll make that edit and bring it back to you all. And that completes my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, City Clerk, we have reminders.
Yes, Tuesday, March 7, at 7:00 PM, Commission Workshop, City Attorney. Tuesday, March 14, at 5:00 PM, CRA Board Meeting, and Tuesday, March 14, at 7:00 PM, City Commission Meeting. Also, there is a workshop on Thursday, March 16, at 5:00 PM, City Commission Workshop, Advertising and Marketing Follow-up.
All right, thank you, Erin. Thank you, everybody, for coming out today, meeting adjourned.